With roll call. Uh, if you are a board member and you are on the phone, please press uh six star six to unmute yourself. Uh, and again, if you're on uh the computer, uh, use the little microphone button. Uh, so Yalitza Checo.
Yeah.
Matthew Ferguson.
Present.
I'll bump the volume on my end so I can hear. Uh Suzanne Secora Ludwig.
Here.
Chris Delatella.
Here.
Ryan Berger.
Here.
Diana Lopez.
Here.
Bob Cardika.
Here.
John Petrolino. George Chidid. And Noah Castaneda. Jeff Crum. Given uh the uh members in attendance, uh our uh acting board chair uh will be Ms. Suzanne Secora Ludwig, if I am correct, uh. Arvind.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Can you uh continue with the public announcement?
Certainly. Um, if I can find it. Um, okay. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gives sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the planning board of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper uh of the city of New Brunswick, namely, the home news Tribune and Star Ledger. Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings of individuals until further notice. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit gatherings of groups. The city planning board intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing and video systems. Public participation in public meetings has been revised, and the public may participate through a conference call-in system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the above notice to the home news Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows. Word professionals will also be available via conference call and video during this meeting as well. All parties on the conference call who will have the opportunity to hear the planning board meeting during the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted, and the board will not be able to hear any comments through the conference call system. During the public comment periods, I will first read public comments issued to the board, and those on the conference call-in lines who have interest in addressing the board will be organized by last name and then called upon to speak. All organized members of the public will speak for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I will notify you that your time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call-in numbers to all the planning department at seven three two seven four five five zero five zero.
Is that complete, Dan?
Yes.
Please stand for salute to the flag if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion to move the minutes?
So uh eligible voters for the minutes are Yalitza Checo, Suzanne Secora Ludwig, Chris Delatella, Ryan Berger, Diana Lopez, and Bob Cardika.
Bob Cardika, motion, uh make a motion to approve.
Chris Delatella will second.
Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Suzanne Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Next, we have resolutions of memorialization. Uh, the first one is Hardenberg Street Redevelopment Associates LLC, twenty-four Hardenberg Street, block five one, lot five six, two seven, two eight, two nine, two nine point oh two, three one, three one point oh one. It's PB two zero two zero dash one two. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, prior to the motion to approve, if I may, uh, this is Arvind Ito, I'm sorry. Uh, there was uh, there are two corrections on that uh resolution on page six. The addition of paragraph thirty-eight and page thirty-nine on page six, which include two uh conditions uh of the approval that were not on the uh the prior version that was circulated to the board members. Condition uh in paragraph thirty-eight is a, is the execution of Title Thirty-nine enforcement with the city, and condition thirty-nine is the applicant shall file cross-access agreements between the parking garage facility and the proposed cancer pavilion, which shall be reviewed by the board attorney and the city prior to filing this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Ito.
Eligible voters on uh on this resolution are Yalitza Checo, Matt Ferguson, Suzanne Secora Ludwig, Ryan Berger, Diana Lopez, and Bob Cardika.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Matt.
And Berger will second.
All right. Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Suzanne Secora Ludwig?
Yeah.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Next, we have the cancer.
I, I, I didn't hear Bob. I didn't hear Bob.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We're good?
Yep.
Okay, next we have the Cancer Pavilion Redevelopment Associates LLC, one sixty-five Somerset Street, block five one, lot two point zero one, PB two zero two zero dash one one. This is for final site plan. And do I have a motion to approve?
Same voting members. Oh.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Dan. And Madam Chair, if I may interrupt again, this is Arvind Ito. As with the prior resolution, there are two additional uh conditions which would appear on page seven, at paragraph twenty-eight and paragraph twenty-nine, they are the same two conditions that appeared on the Hardenberg Street Redevelopment Associates um resolution of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ito.
As I said, same uh six people.
Motion to approve.
Was that you, Matt?
That was me.
All right, thank you.
Bob Cardika will second.
Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Suzanne Secora Ludwig?
Yeah.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez? Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last one is Johnson and Johnson, one Johnson Drive at five oh one fourth street, block thirty-four, lot one, block three six point zero one, lot one point zero one, block ninety-five, lot one, block eight hundred, lot eleven, it's PB two zero two zero dash one five. And are there any additional conditions on this, Mr. Ito?
Uh, that one is uh is accurate as it was presented. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I can uh take a motion from the board, please?
Eligible voters, this one are Yalitza Checo, Suzanne Secora Ludwig, Chris Delatella, Ryan Berger, Diana Lopez, and Bob Cardika.
Chris Delatella, make a motion.
Yalitza Checo, second.
All right. Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Suzanne Secora Ludwig?
Yeah.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Ryan Berger? Ryan Berger? Brian?
Said yes a few times.
Oh, yeah, yeah, every time I thought I heard you, but it cut out, so just wanted to make sure it was on the record. Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move into the public hearings. We have one tonight, and it is Jersey Avenue School Redevelopment Associates LLC, fifty Jersey Avenue, block two zero five point zero one, lot one point zero five, PB two zero two zero dash one six. Preliminary and final site plan application for the construction of a three-story elementary school totaling one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred square feet with one hundred and twenty-eight off-street parking spaces. Jersey Handy Redevelopment Area. Mr. Liebling is the attorney, and prior to handing it over to him, I just want to set the process for tonight's hearing, and it will be as follows. The applicant will provide all of their testimony, and once they are finished, I will open it up for a public comment for questions specific to that testimony only. And then as a reminder, there is always general public comment towards the end of the meeting. With that, Mr. Liebling, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Uh, before I, I started, just wanted to confirm with Mr. Ito um that none of the board I'm sorry, that some of the board members present have any have any conflict with any of the entities involved in this in this application?
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Liebling. Madam Chair, if I may go through our roster, there are a number of individuals that are obviously not present tonight because they have a conflict. Uh, so I'll, I'll start with a member who is here present today, Ms. Lopez. I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Lopez earlier this evening. Ms. Lopez has indicated to me that she is an employee of the Board of Education, and based upon her employment with the Board of Education, it would be prudent for her to recuse herself in participation in this application this evening. Is that correct, Ms. Lopez?
That's correct.
Uh, so Ms. Lopez would uh would not be participating this evening, and certainly she is more than welcome, of course, Madam Chair, to stay and listen, but she cannot participate in any way. Uh, Chairman Crum, as we had previously noted on prior applications, uh, is uh his spouse is on the Board of Education itself, and therefore, uh, it would be appropriate for Mr. Crum to recuse himself. He has and so indicated he is not present here today and he will not participate. Uh, Mr. Castaneda and I had a conversation earlier today. This is a little bit trickier in terms of whether there is or there isn't a direct conflict, but based on my analysis and my conversations with Mr. Castaneda, who is employed by New Brunswick tomorrow, uh, they, there is a a, a future plan to work with an educational program uh that the New Brunswick Tomorrow would be offering the school district and the Board of Education. This is not for compensation, uh, so there is no financial interest. Uh, lacking the pecuniary interest, though, I think that there's a close enough personal interest uh that it would be wise for Mr. Castaneda not to participate, and so indicated in my earlier conversation with him, and he will not be participating this evening. He is not present tonight. Mr. George Chidid, as with prior applications, has indicated to me that he has a spouse that is indirectly employed by Robert Wood Johnson. It's my understanding that Robert Wood Johnson uh is a, is financing the construction of the project, and it would be appropriate for Mr. Chidid, based on his spouse's employment relationship with Robert Wood Johnson, to not participate this evening either. Um, I believe that would be the extent of the recusals this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Liebling.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Charles Liebling from Windells Mark Slade and Middendorf, New Brunswick. Uh, the applicant is Jersey Avenue School Redevelopment Associates LLC, and am I echoing or is someone trying to talk? I guess it's me. Okay, um, the board knows that the governing land use document for the application is the Jersey Handy Redevelopment Area Redevelopment Plan. The application, as described by uh the chairwoman, uh, is fully conforming with the plan, and you'll hear testimony um establishing that further. As was the case for our recent applications, um, not the specific applicant, but affiliated applicant for the Cancer Pavilion and the adjacent parking garage. Um, the board's review of this site plan is for the sole purpose of determining its conformance with the redevelopment plan, and after you hear the testimony of our witnesses, I'm confident you'll be able to reach that conclusion. Um, our first witness this evening is our civil engineer from Langen, Chris Roach, and I'd like to start with him.
Sure, and Mr. Roach is very well-known to this board. You can, um, as long as his credentials haven't changed in the past month, he's accepted as a expert witness.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you still need to be sworn in.
Mr. Roach, uh, please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
It's Christian Roach, R O C H E.
Mr. Roach, uh, do you swear or from tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
You're on.
Okay. Uh, Chris, are you the civil engineer on this project?
I am.
Okay, great. Um, I'll let you, um, I'll let you start walking the, the board and the public through, through your presentation then.
Excellent. Mr. Dominguez, if you wouldn't mind starting out with exhibit A one?
Just a second, let me pull it up.
Take your time.
All right. You see? Just checking to make sure.
Thanks, Dan. So the project site we're going to talk about tonight is identified as block two hundred and five point oh one, lot one point oh five. It's approximately six acres and it's bound by Jersey Avenue to the west, Brunswick Town Center to the north, the existing Amtrak rail line to the east, and Delvan and Stamford Street to the south. The project site is primarily occupied by open space, as well as containing some concrete slabs and asphalt remnants from previous developments on the project site. As our attorney mentioned, the project site is entirely within the Jersey Handy Redevelopment Plan area, and we're not seeking any variance or deviation from that redevelopment plan here tonight. Dan, if you wouldn't mind going to exhibit A two? Thank you. So exhibit A two is a colored or rendered version of the site layout plan, which is submitted as part of our site plan application package. And what the applicant is proposing to construct on site is a three-story school containing a total of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred gross square feet. The building will have a footprint of approximately sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ten square feet, while also providing a fourteen thousand square foot playground area in the center of the site. We are proposing one hundred and twenty-eight parking stalls on the property, which satisfies the city parking requirements. Specifically, the city requires two parking stalls per classroom, as well as one additional parking stall for administrative staff members. Using that criteria, we're obligated to have one hundred and twenty-one parking stalls on site, whereas we're proposing the one hundred and twenty-eight stalls. Out of those one hundred and twenty-eight stalls, seven will be ADA compliant, where six ADA stalls are required, and we're also proposing five electric vehicle charging stations in the southeastern portion of the site. The site layout has been designed to provide three hundred and sixty-degree vehicular access around the school building. Access to the site will be primarily provided via a proposed signalized intersection at the Hale Street and Jersey Avenue intersection. The purpose for signalizing this intersection is twofold. Number one, we feel it provides significant enhancements pedestrian safety to have a signalized intersection. We'll have all new pedestrian crossing heads, as well as new ADA ramps and new crosswalks in the area. And secondly, it improves traffic operations relative to vehicles getting in and out of the school site during those peak morning periods and the afternoon departure period. We're proposing a one-way bus drop-off drive on the northern portion of the site, which is approximately two hundred and forty feet long and fifteen feet wide. This has the ability to queue the anticipated number of buses based on input from the school district. We're anticipating that to include three full-size buses, which are around forty feet in length, and four smaller capacity buses around twenty to twenty-five feet in length. If you do the math on that, that totals approximately two hundred and twenty feet of bus length, and we have a bus drop-off area of two hundred and forty feet capable of supporting that queue. We anticipate the primary drop-off location for students will be on the western portion of the site. We're proposing a one-way drop-off lane, which is sixteen feet wide, which also has eight-foot wide parallel parking stalls throughout. That sixteen-foot width does allow vehicles to pass one another. If we were to do a single-file line, we could store up to twenty-five cars in that queue, and if cars start going side by side, you could double that to fifty. However, the main objective with this drop-off area is to have the ability for cars to do the single-file drop-off, while also allowing other cars to pass, so one car wouldn't be able cause significant delays in this drop-off area. I'll also note that there are additional potential drop-off areas in the southern portion of the site within a parking lot near Delavan Street, as well as within a drive aisle on the eastern portion of the site. Loading and unloading operations for school will take place at the southeast corner of the building. We've designed a loading area which is capable of accommodating WB forty-sized trucks, as well as bulk trash trucks. We anticipate that these deliveries will happen around two to three times per day, and I'll note that the deliveries will be scheduled as such that they will not occur during those peak morning arrival periods and those late afternoon peak departure periods. From a streetscape perspective, we're proposing all-new concrete sidewalk along Jersey Avenue, as well as a significant amount of new landscaping on site, which will include sixty-nine new trees, four hundred and seventy-seven shrubs, um, which are mainly focused around the building perimeter, as well as the perimeter of the site in general. I'll point out specifically, we're proposing a significant amount of landscaping along the eastern property line, which is our property line that abuts the rail line. To put some context to this, our property line is approximately fifty feet away from the rail tracks, and the proposed building footprint is approximately two hundred feet away from the rail track. So the architect will talk more about some of the acoustical properties that went into our design, given the extent of how close we are to the rail line. In addition to landscaping on that eastern side of the property, we're proposing an eight-foot-high anti-climb fence for protection to make sure no one has the ability to get on the rail line property. That fence will run the entire perimeter perimeter of the eastern property line. Lighting-wise, we're proposing all-new light fixtures along Jersey Avenue, as well as all-new LED light fixtures on the property. Those will be twenty-five foot in height, and they've been designed and located to meet the city requirements necessary to meet the required foot candles or lighting levels within the parking lot and sidewalk areas. Relative to stormwater management, we're going to be significantly reducing the peak flows leaving our site compared to existing conditions through the construction of two proposed underground detention basins. One of these basins will be located on the west portion of the site beneath the proposed drop-off area. The second basin will be located in the eastern portion of the site beneath the proposed parking lot. In conjunction with those basins, we are going to be installing mechanical treatment devices to also improve water quality leaving the site. Relative to utilities, the vast majority of our utilities are going to be coming in off Delvan Street from the south, as well as a few utility connections which will connect to the existing systems in Jersey Avenue. Santeri Sewer, we have two building connections. One will lead the northern building face and will connect to the Jersey Avenue system. The second connection will lead the southern building face and connect to the existing sewer line in Delvan Street. Water service will be provided off Delvan Street. We plan to replace the existing six-inch diameter main currently located beneath Delvan Street with a new eight-inch diameter main, and afterward, we're going to be providing our proposed fire and domestic water service from the addition, gas, electric, and telecom services will also be provided from Delvan Street. So I did want to spend a few minutes here before wrapping up, just giving a high-level overview of some of the environmental conditions on site. I'll note that I'm a civil engineer by background, however, we do have an environmental professional with us, Neil Rivers, from Langen here tonight, who can answer any technical questions that the board has, as well as from members of the public. So I'll, I'll start the environmental review by just stating that the environmental conditions on this site are very typical for sites in New Brunswick and other areas in New Jersey that have previously been developed. In conjunction with that, there's also a series of regulations required at the state level, which must be followed prior to opening a school on the property. Specifically, there's the Madden legislation, which details requirements for environmental assessments and cleanups, which must be completed prior to a certificate of occupancy for a school being opened. There's NJDEP technical requirements for site remediation, which outline the necessary remediation measures, which must be complete prior to opening a school. And then the New Jersey Department of Health also has an indoor environmental health assessment, which must be required prior to opening the building to students. So specific to this site, there is known contamination specifically in soil due to historic fill across the property, and there's also an isolated groundwater contamination area. Um, the groundwater contamination, the levels that we've reviewed so far, while they exceed the New Jersey groundwater quality standards, the exceedances are order of magnitudes less than the NJDEP vapor intrusion groundwater levels, meaning we wouldn't be required to do a vapor barrier or vapor mitigation system. However, given the nature of what we're proposing on site, being a school, we as a team feel it's the right thing to do, and we will be installing a vapor barrier and vapor mitigation system. In conjunction with that, there are several other remediation measures that will likely be implemented as far as this project throughout construction. Those will include isolated soil removal areas where we have high levels of soil contamination. We'll be capping some on-site residual soil areas. And lastly, once all these activities are complete, there are ongoing monitoring requirements that the state has, which will be obligated to follow moving forward after this development opens. We'll be subject to on-site monitoring with the groundwater, as well as doing annual inspections on some of the remediation measures that have been put in place. So I'll close like I normally do by discussing some of the comments we got from the consulting planner, consulting engineers. We have no problem complying to any of the comments, with the exception of one comment in the planning letter. Comment ten I states that the eastern drive should remain the property of school operators as support of education. That's the drive between our bus lane and the shopping center to the north. While we're proposing to leave this as part of our site today, um, we would like to have the ability to have discussions with the city in the future about potentially making that a public right-of-way, which we may or may not do. Um, so we just want to leave that option open to future discussions, if so desired in the future.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Thanks so much, Chris. Um, Madam Chair, Mr. Roach is available for questions from the board.
Okay, do any of our, first, I just want to ask if our professionals have any questions for Mr. Roach?
Uh, Madam Chair? Uh, this is, uh, this is Charlie. Um, we issued a report in December of twenty twenty. Uh, Mr. Roach and his firm uh revised their plans uh to largely address the comments that we offered. It was a lengthy report. Uh, we should report on February third. Uh, and uh, they've made good progress in terms of touching all the bases that they needed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carly. Mr. Butcher, do you have anything?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do have a report uh that was revised through February eighth. I don't have any specific questions uh for Mr. Roach, but I do have some uh questions uh that are still outstanding in the report that I'd like to have the LSRP and the architect and maybe some other folks uh answer, uh, but nothing further for Mr. Roach.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have any questions for this one?
Uh, Bob Cardika?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
A couple of things uh that were highlighted in the DNR report and perhaps the uh, the Bignell reports that we received that did you say that the that the student um pick-up and drop-off areas for both uh guardians and buses would be the same? Is that, are they going to be using the same area? And if so, is that, is that advisable?
Uh, the, the short answer is no. The uh, the buses will all be doing their drop-offs on the northern portion of the site. We have a dedicated bus drop-off lane, and by northern portion of the site, I'm referring to the side between the post-school and the shopping center.
Okay.
The main drop-off for the students will be on the western portion of the site. It's a one-way drop-off lane which runs parallel to Jersey Avenue, and I agree with you, it's ideal to keep these operations separate.
Okay, thank you. The other question is um uh, which I thought was relevant was is there a plan for, like, if the school needs to be evacuated? Um, is there a suitable area in which uh students can uh can be placed in a safe location where students can be placed in the event that the building has to be evacuated?
I'll let the architect get into the further details on that. Um, I will state, though, that technically, this is something that's worked through with, with the school district to identify those areas. I believe preliminarily, we were identifying some of the grassed areas in the eastern portion of the site, but the architect can provide further detail.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Cardika?
Uh, for now, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Matt Ferguson for Mr. Roach. Looking at the DNR report, and you had mentioned that you sort of were in compliance, you know, in agreement with the comments, specifically thinking about ten F, which talks about some sort of deterrence from drop-off on Jersey Avenue so that students wouldn't potentially be kind of walking through the grass and then walking through the bus lane. What's, you know, what is kind of the recommendation? Or I'm not sure if there's a, the traffic engineer might be the better person to answer that question. But what are your, you know, the response or thoughts to that specifically?
The first response is ideally we'll have all of our student drop-offs, or the vast majority of the student drop-offs, take place in the dedicated student drop-off area on the western portion of the site. By doing this, we eliminate any conflict with where the buses are performing their drop off. And there's also programs put in place by the school district as the school's opening, which really dictate where these drop-offs will take place. There's morning staff directing traffic as needed. There's crossing guards out there to help direct pedestrian traffic. So it'll be kind of a team approach as the school gets up and running to really solidify the drop-off program.
Got it. So, but there's not going to be a plan, or there's not going to be consideration to any sort of boundary on the Jersey Avenue side on the property line towards the sidewalk?
When you say boundary, I'm not trying to understand the question. Right now, there's a sidewalk along Jersey Avenue. And there's circulation onsite. The vehicles should be able, without issue, to get off of Jersey Avenue onto the school property to perform the necessary drop-offs. I agree with you. If you're making the statement along the lines of that the last thing we want is vehicles stopping on Jersey Avenue to make drop-offs, that is certainly a statement I agree with. We are proposing landscaping to provide a little bit of a barrier from the sidewalk area to try and limit the amount of students walking through from that Jersey Avenue sidewalk directly to the school.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Lebleng, if you have another witness, please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just for the purpose of answering Mr. Bletcher's question that he said he wanted to propose to our environmental professional, just to soon swear him in now and let him satisfy Mr. Bletcher to the extent he's able.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Neil Rivers from Langen. He is the LSRP for the project. And I guess, could you go ahead and swear him in?
Sure. Mr. Rivers, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Neil, N-E-I-L, Rivers, R-I-V-E-R-S.
Mr. Rivers, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What is yours?
Okay, Mr. Rivers, can you confirm that you are, in fact, the licensed site remediation professional for this project?
Yes, sir, I am.
Just a little bit of background of your education and professional experience?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in biology and master's credits in environmental engineering. As you asked earlier, I'm a licensed site remediation professional in New Jersey. I've been practicing in the environmental world, environmental arena for over forty years.
Have you testified before other boards and had your qualifications accepted as an expert in this area?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to propose Mr. Rivers as an expert in this field.
So accepted.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bletcher? Feel free.
Well, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm that the LSRP could just, you know, come before the board and just explain, just briefly, the environmental conditions on the site, and also just assure the board that whatever remediation needs to take place, that the school facility won't be open and occupied until that remediation takes place, and then the conditions on the site meet whatever standards are in place by the NJDEP. And then we recommended a condition in our report that the certificate of occupancy be withheld until the point at which that LSRP certifies that the conditions on the site meet the standard for schools in New Jersey. So I think it would just make me more comfortable, and I'd assume that some of the board members more comfortable if the LSRP person, Mr. Rivers, could just elaborate on that and clarify that, those details for us. That's all.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yes, okay, thank you. Let me back, let me answer the questions in reverse order, if I may. Mr. Roach mentioned earlier the Madden legislation, which establishes a series of requirements that are necessary to be complied with for new educational facilities, school in this instance. So environmental studies are required to be completed, and ultimately, the licensed site remediation professional is required under the Madden legislation to issue a response action outcome. Response action outcome is the final determination by the LSRP that any site remediation has been done compliant with the regulations of the state in New Jersey and is protective of public health and safety and the environment. So, Mr. Bletcher, to your question, that response action outcome is the final, essentially the final determination that I make in that instance. In addition to my RAO response action outcome, Mr. Roach mentioned that the Department of Health evaluates indoor air quality as a precondition of sites under the Madden legislation. So the Department of Health will be evaluating the conditions as well. At least for the moment, give you the sense of the types of things that need to be done?
It does. And just maybe, perhaps, Mr. Lebleng would just clarify. So is the applicant agreeing to a condition of approval that you will have all of these? And I presume the answer is yes, because you have to. Like, even if you, you know, you decline, you'd still have to do it, whether you like it or not. You can't open the school and operate according to the legislation unless you have that RAO in place.
That's correct, and I agree with you entirely. That absent the condition and the approval, we would have to do it anyway. And it certainly is not a question of like it or not. There is no interest at all in making this school anything other than as safe as possible. And obviously, the Board of Education, who is, you know, not the applicant, but will be the owner and user of this school, is, you know, has that, you know, extreme concern. Their development contract with us requires us to satisfy all those requirements. And we're fully aware of everything that needs to be done and will be done.
Okay. Very well. I know you had a second question, Mr. Bletcher, just to make sure that I understood it. I think it was just a summary of site conditions?
Yes, a summary of the conditions on the site and just some information based on your opinion as an expert that whatever contamination is present, it's something that can be addressed through your process.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, yes, as Mr. Roach mentioned, site conditions are really very similar to what we encounter on a regular basis at sites that have had a history of development and redevelopment over time. Soils at the property contain remnants of demolition debris and similar materials that are referred to under the New Jersey regulations as historic fill. These constituents are readily addressed and readily remediated by a combination of excavation and capping. Capping is a cleanup technology that essentially covers and isolates those materials from exposure. And part of the development plan will be to remove some of the areas of contaminated soil and to cap other areas of the site. Groundwater on the property exhibits, based on our testing, has exhibits no contamination, site-related contamination. We have ten wells across the property. Nine of them, the groundwater meets the current New Jersey groundwater quality standards. The tenth, the most up gradient well, it's actually right at the very edge of the property, contains low levels of tetrachloroethylene. It's a chlorinated solvent at concentrations that slightly exceed New Jersey's groundwater quality standard. But the next down gradient well on the property does not contain that tetrachloroethylene. In fact, the LSRP that did the work for this well, installed this well at the time, notified the Department of the Finding, and the department accepted the conclusion that that tetrachloroethylene is unrelated to the site and that, in fact, there was no responsibility on the part of the property owner to remediate that groundwater. So as Mr. Roach mentioned, the plan, given the presence of tetrachloroethylene in groundwater, is to install a vapor intrusion mitigation system as part of the remediation of the site, as part of the construction of the site. Although it is not required, it's been included in the design as a prudent measure. So those are the primary remediation technologies. Those are the constituents that are present in soils and groundwater at the site. I'll ask if there are other questions.
I have one question myself. I thought I read something in a report that there is some contamination and whatever the remediation process is going to be, it would be an ongoing process that would take place even after the building was up. Is that correct?
I'm not sure specifically what you're referring to, but perhaps it relates to the concept, these regulatory requirements New Jersey has established, that where these low levels of historic fill remain on the property, there's a responsibility on the part of the remediating party to obtain a permit from NJDEP and on a long-term basis to inspect the cap and report to the NJDEP on a routine basis that the site cap is still in place and that the remediation remains protective. So that's a long-term stewardship obligation that would be part of the remedy. Is that perhaps what you were thinking about?
Yes, I believe it was. Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions?
Bob Cardica? Given that this location has, as you've called it, historic fill conditions, what, can you render any estimate of the amount of time remediation could take at this location?
Yes, Mr. Cardica, in fact, the remediation will be able to be completed concurrent with the development process itself. The remedy, as I mentioned earlier, which is largely a series of requirements that are prescribed by NJDEP in their technical requirements, is a combination of excavation of soil and the covering, the capping of soils. And as I mentioned earlier, the site development itself will be such that it will serve the purpose of capping. So the asphalt parking lot, concrete, things of that nature, serve that capping purpose. So essentially, all of the remediation is done concurrently with the development.
Very good. Thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions?
Madam Chair? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this is Arvin Eytal. Just for clarification purposes, perhaps you can have Mr. Rivers explain what is an LSRP and with whom does the LSRP's loyalties lie?
Absolutely.
Yes, an LSRP is a licensed site remediation professional. This is a profession that was established by the Site Remediation Reform Act in New Jersey in 2009, I'm going by memory here. And essentially, it establishes a class of environmental professional who has met certain standards of education and experience and passed an exam that'll allow that individual to practice and perform environmental studies and oversee, manage, direct environmental cleanups at sites, and ultimately, to issue the response action outcome that I described. My responsibility, the first, let me say that under the Site Remediation Reform Act, the legislature established a code of conduct, a twenty-six-part code of conduct. And the first item of that code of conduct is that my responsibility as an LSRP is to the protection of public health and safety and the environment. So although I'm retained by parties that have ownership of sites or responsibilities for remediation, my primary responsibility is the protection of public health, safety, and the environment.
Madam Chair, just one follow-up question, if I may?
Yeah.
Mr. Rivers, based on the twenty-six-point directive that's been issued by the state, are you stating under oath today that you would not issue an RAO unless you believe that in your professional capacity that the property was, in fact, met the standards and was safe for the public?
Yes, sir, I am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have...
Okay, now I just want to ask the board one more time if you have any questions for this witness. Hearing none. Mr. Lebleng?
Yes, our next witness is our project architect from DMR Architects, Kurt Verheilig. There he is. Okay. Can we just swear him in, first of all?
Sure. Mr. Verheilig, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Yes, my name is Kurt Verheilig, spelt V's in Victor, I-E-R-H-E-I-L-I-G.
Mr. Verheilig, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You're on.
Great, thank you. Kurt, could you describe, first of all, your role in the project?
Yeah, so I'm a partner and director of design at DMR Architects, and I oversaw the development, the design, and preparation of the documents that were submitted to the board this evening.
Great. How about your educational background and your licensing?
Yeah, so I attended New Jersey Institute of Technology, graduated in 1999. It's my Bachelor of Architecture. I am a licensed architect in good standing in the state of New Jersey.
Great, okay. Have you appeared before this or any other boards as an architect?
I have not appeared before this board, but I have appeared before forty or fifty other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
They've accepted your qualifications without?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Given that, Madam Chair, I'd like to submit Mr. Verheilig as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes, so accepted.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, you can direct Mr. Dominguez as to which exhibits you'd like to be shown. The first set, which is, we're going to call A3, are colorized drawings from the application itself. So they're already part of the file. And then the other three were submitted as exhibits, A4, A5, and A6, so.
Right. So if, Mr. Dominguez, if you could pull up... Right, so if Mr. Dominguez, if you could pull up Exhibit A3, which is our colorized set of drawings, there are six drawings in there. First sheet is, is identified as A1. If you could actually go to A2 though.
Yeah, we have it listed on our exhibit sheet as, as B1, but let me just pull it up.
Madam Chair, if I may, Dan, can, can you have that relabeled as A3 so we keep this in sequential order, please? It doesn't have to be relabeled today, but let's mark it as A3. And A3 is comprised of 1, 2, 3, 4, 6?
Correct, 6.
6 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And they're, they're the same as was submitted to the board, except they, they've had color added to them.
Okay, so we'll call that A3, 1 through 6.
Great.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if you could go to this, the next sheet, please. So just as a point of orientation and reference, Mr. Roach had presented a site plan with the upper portion of the drawing being Jersey Ave. And that would be west, to the right is, is the north elevation, which is Hale. And to the left, to the left side is Delavan Street, and that's to the south. So what we're looking at here is the ground floor plan. And the building is configured in a U-shaped configuration. On the top portion and going down towards the right is a three-story portion of the building. The main entrance is off of the, the northwest corner on the top right. And that's where the, the main drop-off for parents, as well as the, the bus drop-off access will be entered into the building for the students. Proceeding down on the, the eastern side, on the bottom of the sheet, there are the large group spaces and those large group spaces, which are shown in the, kind of the salmon color, are the multipurpose room, gymnasium and the cafeteria. And those are taller, high-volume spaces. That is a essentially like a one and a half-story volume. And there's a secondary entrance there located center to that, between the multipurpose room and the gymnasium. That's what would be an alternative entrance to the building, as well as after-hours entry to the building. The building is configured and set up so that the, the large group gathering spaces can be utilized after hours and the rest of the school can be separated off so as to not allow access into the remainder of the school. Continuing around to the left, to the left side of the, the gymnasium is our service space. So that would be food service and building, mechanical and utility rooms. And then the loading dock is on the bottom left, as Mr. Roach had explained on the site plan. There, the playground for this building is located central to the plan. And, and that, that is enclosed on the south side, portion southwest side by a, by a six-foot-high fence. In terms of access points to the building, as I mentioned, there's the main entry and that's primary access. As we proceed around, moving clockwise, center to that north elevation, there's another entrance. That's for access for students from bus drop-off in order to enable them, if they're coming earlier or late, in order to have them accessing to the larger group spaces. As we move around to the bottom, you have the secondary exit, entrance. And that's primarily for after-hours or, or secondary access during the school day. And then as we proceed clockwise around, up on the top left of the main three-story classroom wing is kindergarten entry. So that, the kindergarten will have its own entry and access to those five classrooms. If you could proceed to the next sheet, please. So here we have the second floor plan. And so we've got the, the classrooms all color-coded. Essentially, it's a double-loaded corridor, the blue, the blue elements being the circulation run down the center of the, of the building. The second floor contains the media center, which is on the top right in that, that salmon color. And the remainder of the spaces are educational spaces in terms of classrooms and some, some science classrooms and teacher workspaces, as well as other support spaces, mechanically utility and toilet areas. Next, please. And the third floor plan, again, very similar. There are 43 classrooms in the building, so they're distributed equally throughout, since it is a K to eight school. So having the classrooms distributed throughout and having those support spaces, such as those orange spaces or the program support spaces, as well as those brown spaces. So part of the configuration is that the classrooms and those support spaces get distributed equally for effectiveness and functionality purposes. Okay, proceed. Past that, if you could keep going to the renderings. And I think, so this would be, I think, A101 is Exhibit A4. And then A102 is Exhibit A5. And A103 is Exhibit A6. I think that's the way that we had. Is that correct, Kurt Liebling?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so, Mr. Dominguez, if we could start with A101, which is the front elevation. If you can zoom in on that. Thank you very much. Well. Okay, so this is the Jersey Ave entrance elevation perspective. So Jersey Ave would be, would be standing on Jersey Ave. To the left would be Hale Street. So the building design is such that the main entrance to the building has really been designed to become that focal point and identity element for the facility. That's a two-story element. On the second floor is the media center. And the, and it's highlighted by that blue panel picture window frame element. The main entrance is, is, is below that. And see to the right element on the first floor is the entry. And then there's a portion of covered area for outdoor queuing and standing and waiting for students. The remainder of the building, as you can see on the right side, that three-story classroom wing is mainly articulated by the use of a gray brick and accented and highlighted in that lighter gray horizontal banding, a textured metal panel, along with some sunshade devices and whatnot. So the use of punch windows, large glazed openings and a combination of complementary materials is how this front elevation was designed in order to create a distinctive identity and kind of destination focal element as the, the new school on Jersey Avenue. As you can see in the front, on the left here, there's a, there's a, a planter element with flagpoles and there's signage. So that on the left is a monument sign. That sign is, is a eight-foot-by-five-foot sign, double-sided digital sign, which will be in conformance with the signage requirements. It will be non-flashing and will, will be programmed by the district and be programmed in compliance with the requirements of the signage ordinance. In addition to that, the Jersey Avenue School letters and sign that identifies the building, those. Let me just see the exact sizes. But that is our, our second sign. And that is, that's three and a half by 36 feet, 126 square feet of that signage, which is applied onto the front of the canopy. And so those, those letters will be solid letters with a, a back panel and will be internally, they will be backlit. So the letters will glow at night, but during the day, they'll stand out in contrast with the, with the blue panel and with the, the white canopy. So that would be our second sign. And as we get to the elevations, I'll describe the size of the third signage. Also to note, in terms of the security elements and features of the building, you'll see besides the planter in the front, which is raised and creates a kind of a, a natural buffer and barrier and a kind of corner element. So that planter is holding the corner of Hale and Jersey. You can see running from left to right, just in front of the entrance, is a row of bollards. So those bollards are, are being provided for safety and security measures and also are in compliance with the NJDCA standards and guides for new school construction. So this, this building will be designed to comply with those requirements as well. And then also on the right, you'll see there's landscaping along the, we call it foundation plantings. But in this case, we've worked with the engineer to really enhance the amount of landscaping and the distance away from the building. So one, one way of deterring people from getting up close to the building is to create a layer of low landscaping and a buffer. So generally, if you create that separation of landscaping and texture and at a distance far enough, people who end up coming too close to the building are less likely to do that because it's really, they're out of place in that kind of zone. So we've done that along the, the areas of the building, specifically where there's offices and classrooms at the ground floor that are on the perimeter of the, of the school, so. All right, if you could go to the next slide, please, Mr. Dominguez, and that would be A102, which is Exhibit A5. So this rendering is showing the, the rear entry to the, to the new school. So if you recall on, on the site plan presented by Mr. Roach, along the eastern side of the, of the school was a, a kind of a large parking area. And then there was a circulation drive aisle. So you're seeing that circulation drive aisle moving from left to right there. In the center, the focal point would be the entrance. And besides being one of the multiple entrances to the building, it, it will really, this will serve as the after-hours entrance for, for participants and for the community when there are functions within the school. You'll see in the background, there's the three-story classroom wing component. As we come around the back of the building, we introduce a second color of brick, as a, like a tan gray brick. So you see that tan gray in the back on the right and you see that dark gray brick in the front where it says gymnasium. And those two bricks are complementing bricks and they play off each other. And they're used to define and break down the massing of the, of the building. So that's, those two bricks are used compatibly with each other and they, they define building elements and components. In addition to that, there's, you'll see, so this, this front element, which in the foreground, there's this bluish light color. So those are, that's a cow wall, translucent wall glazing. And that's used just to bring diffused ambient light into the gymnasium. So that's the gymnasium space. And then just to the right of that is the multipurpose room. The gymnasium signage, that's, that would be our third signage element. And as represented on the drawings, that is 38 and a half feet by 28 feet. So that's 91 square feet. And that would be the same, that would be a backlit aluminum letter that will be applied to the, to the facade. And the, the text is what we know the text to be right now. And, you know, depending on further discussions with the district, we, you know, the text and actual wording may change. But we're, we're, we're asking for that, that area to be able to utilize and incorporate the, the signage or identification of what's happening on that side of the facade. Okay, could we go to the next exhibit, A103, which is Exhibit A6? And so this exhibit, this rendering is showing the, which on the right side is showing the cafeteria space. The driveway and access, you're seeing a portion of that parking area, that's coming off of Delavan. And this is kind of the loop and circulation in for the parent drop-off. Again, as you can see, there's a series of bollards for security and protection. We're using that, that foundation landscaping around the perimeter. We have, on the left is the, the playground area, as I had mentioned before, kind of in, surrounded on three sides. And this fourth side is, is enclosed with a six-foot-high fence to be able to secure, secure the playground and keep the separation, keep the students in the playground area and then any unauthorized people on the exterior. Access, there's multiple accesses, access point up a ramp into the, the cafeteria. And then there's also access off a grade to the left, right off the screen. And that, I guess if we could go back to, to the front rendering, I just, just want to talk about some of the, the elements. So in terms of acoustics and the design of the building, Mr. Roach had explained a little bit about the location of the Amtrak rail. So what we're looking at here is the, is the three-story portion of the building. And then that returns back. And if you look in the back and the rear, they're back behind those trees, that buffer would be the railroad. So in designing and configuring the building, we arranged it so that to, to bring the classrooms and push the classrooms as far away from the rail line as possible. So that three-story classroom wing is pushed up towards, poured towards Jersey Ave and along Hale Street. So as to minimize the proximity and the closeness of the classrooms to the, to the rail line. So as part of what, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be undertaking a study of the existing conditions. Our consultant will go out and measure the existing conditions and then we'll formulate a report that then provides strategies and guidance in terms of how to, how to best design the school to meet the criteria for acoustics in school construction. So that's going to, that is going to be incorporated. But I'll just say from experience on working other, on other projects, you know, we do have a masonry building. The majority of the classroom wing is, wing is masonry and masonry is generally the best sound deadener and absorptive material of that can be used. So we feel that just the, the, the direction of the design is really built in those, those safeguards and those elements that are going to help reduce any external noise from penetrating in and disrupting the learning process. And I guess if, I guess so that's, that's it. If there's anything else that you'd like me to hit on, Mr. Liebling?
No, that's, that's fine. The, the board's professionals and board members may have some specific questions based on the reports, which I'm, I'm sure you'll be able to answer.
Okay, okay. So if there's any questions, please.
Thank you. Do any of our board professionals have any questions?
Madam Chair, not for me, for the architect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Todd Bletcher. I do have a couple of quick, quick questions for the architect. I, I guess it would be, and we alluded to this in the plan report. During a time of a fire drill and the students have to exit the building, we're looking for a safe place to be identified on the plan with where they're going to go. And we, we had a note in the plan, just to clarify that a safe place doesn't mean the parking lot.
Right. So I think this would be a combination of, of things. So the, we would, what we would look to do is utilize the open lawn spaces that are on the, on the the eastern side of the building. So a combination of those open lawn spaces and along the perimeter of the slidewalks on Hale and Delevan. And that in coordination with a district prepared emergency plan, which, you know, in the case of emergency, the staff and personnel would would be distributed, and they would go to certain points where each generally each class is assigned a location to go. So it would be in an orderly fashion where students or classes would go to certain areas pre designated, and that would be in coordination with staff and personnel and security guards that would direct them.
Sure. So, Mr. Veerling, I'm not, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot for, you know, the details of that, but I just want to make sure, what's the capacity of the school? How many students, staff and faculty?
It's approximately nine hundred to eleven hundred students, and the staff is approximately one hundred and ten.
So just a number of persons, we're talking about a maybe a thousand people?
Thousand, twelve hundred.
Okay. I just want to verify that there is a physical location for a thousand to twelve hundred people to go if they need to evacuate this building so that they're not standing in the parking lot or the road or something, so that fire trucks and other vehicles, if those need to whiz on by, they can get on by and fight a fire or deal with an emergency. If if that's something that, you know, that's something that needs to be sort of thought of now and baked into the design of the site to make sure we have a place for twelve hundred people to go, I I'm not sure of that yet. Maybe you could just clarify, where are these people going to go?
Well, the as I as I just had previously indicated, that there are areas around the perimeter of the building, aside just the parking areas. In addition, and in place, we don't have the plan at this point. But with every school, there's an emergency plan that's that is put into action. And it's it's not just, you know, it's it's organized and it's orchestrated, and it's something that that's generally practiced. So while it may seem like a large number, it's really a manageable thing.
No, I understand. I'm sure that the school and Board of Ed folks are going to have to to work on that. I just want to verify at this stage that there's a physical place for them to do that.
There are there are lawn and open spaces on the on the eastern side end of Hale, on end of Delevan, there's a large open green spaces. There's there's sidewalk space along both of those streets, and there's sidewalk space along and the the main entrance plaza along Jersey Ave. So there's quite a bit of perimeter. I the, you know, I would say, you know, hundreds of feet, you know, total, you know, probably upwards of six, seven hundred feet of sidewalk along with these grassed areas that I mentioned on the east side.
Okay. Okay, so I have some other just kind of quick questions, but I'm not sure if any board members wanted to follow up on the on the evacuation details, but I just have some just really quick ones for that relate to architectural design of the building.
Okay.
The surface of the playground, what is that going to be?
The so the surface of playground is going to be a it hasn't actually been a hundred percent hundred percent finalized. We're still working through the programming, but it will be a combination of surfaces, whether that be asphalted surfaces or sports surface in terms of a a like a a flexible play surface. So
Okay.
It'll be a combination of those, but the program and the exactly how it's going to be utilized hasn't been a hundred percent finalized at this point. But that's like, for example, basketball court, you know, those kind of areas would be harder surface. And then, you know, if there's if there's a, you know, perimeter kind of walking track, there'll be like a flexible walking surface.
Okay, I didn't see any playground equipment, and this is a K through eight school. Is there going to be playground equipment out there?
There there will, there will be equipment. Like I said, that is something that's still in the discussion stages. The kindergarten will will be necessitate playground equipment. And that could be, you know, I think that we can, once we finalize that, we can definitely work with the with with yourself and engineering department to make sure that you it meets your satisfaction. But it's 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 a it's in the details, you know.
Okay. And in the playground area, there's a there's a fencing perimeter that sort of leads out to the, I'm going to call it the west side of the site.
Right.
So that fence, sorry, to the southwest. So if if the students are in that playground area, or if they evacuate to that internal playground area, can they get out?
Yes.
Is there a is there a push push gate or something to?
Yeah, there will, there are gates to allow access to the exterior. Yes.
Okay. And inside the the building, in the classrooms, will there be sinks and water fountains in in each individual room?
Not in every, not in every room. Depending on the functionality and the and the use of the space, not every room is required or is it's necessary to have sink or water fountain?
Okay. From my understanding, is the sort of evolving detail of the design of a school now is putting a sink and a and a and a water fountain in every classroom for things like hand washing, for things like, you know, you know, drinking and that sort of thing. So I think it's it's something to just, you know, explore, putting the sinks in.
Yeah, we can take a look at that and discuss with the district. Absolutely.
In in those classrooms, built in storage or the classrooms sort of just of empty rooms with furniture that will be brought in?
The furniture, it's a combination of built in storage and movable, you know, chairs and furniture. So generally around the perimeter, I so I wouldn't, I should, it's not really built in, but I would say it's kind of it's fixed, I'll put it that way. But it's generally pre, you know, prefabricated furniture, storage closets, shelving that goes in around the perimeter. And then there's in the center of the room is other desks and other tables that can be, you know, moved and manipulated according to the program and the need of the educational curriculum.
Okay, so three other things, and there there's sort of three questions, but they're all sort of related. Number one, do the windows open?
There are operable windows, yes.
Okay. And in terms of climate control, is each individual classroom able to control its own climate, or is it sort of one?
Yes, yes.
That's good to hear. Okay. Excellent. And just in terms of air circulation, does the building have a system or where there'll be sort of a system to circulate, getting fresh air from the outside into the building?
Yeah, I mean, that that's always been a requirement of ASHRAI, which is to provide air change and air circulation. You know, but in terms of filtration and whatnot, the, you know, the the most the most efficient air infiltration systems and filters will be utilized in the school.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions for the architect?
This is Bob Kartika again, following up on the evacuation plan. So the the courtyard, this the center of the of the campus there, that wouldn't be considered an appropriate location to evacuate students? Again, I'm I'm following up on this because there isn't a whole lot of area.
Yeah, I mean, the the playground could be a a an area of of evacuation. That could be, yes.
I mean, I would assume that if they did a fire drill, that's where the kids would end up, you know, that that's where the, you know, the administrators and the folks in the in the who run in the school would put the kids, right? I would imagine that would that would end up being the if there was an emergency, that's where I'd see them being, you know? I'm just wondering if that is advisable, since it's really, you know, the
So it is large enough to be able to enable that. So, you know, based on the dimensions of it, and there is adequate ways to exit it. So you can exit that from the from the from the courtyard out to the driveway and the public way.
Okay. Another question, with regard to your concerns with the noise associated with the northeast corridor right behind the school, was a was a wall considered? Which would not only address the safety issues, but the noise issues at the same time? Was that part of the thought process?
A wall, a wall wasn't considered. I mean, I think the Mr. Roche described the the landscaping and the vegetative buff buffer that's going to be provided. The wall, you know, because of the distance of, you know, two hundred plus feet away from the from the property line, the wall wouldn't really be, it would have to be very, very tall in order to block
Thinking, I was thinking similar to what, you know, they put up in highways to go through that go through residential areas, those type of
So generally, those walls really only help, and they mitigate the noise from the houses that are directly adjacent to the highway. You know, the sound as the sound travels, sound travels, you know, in a path, once it hits the top of the wall, continues past that. So it really, those sound walls really are most beneficial to the to the dwellings that are right, you know, behind or within close proximity to the wall, below the height of the wall. Once the sound travels over the wall, in in this case, you know, with the building being so far away, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be effective. But as I mentioned, we we're addressing that by using the other means and methods of of acoustic abatement, if you will, of, you know, designing the building to address those noise concerns specific to the site. So, you know, we're going to, all those issues with the acoustics will be addressed specific to this site once the baseline noise criteria is determined, and it's going to be on the building. So the envelope of the building will be where the noise and the sound gets either absorbed or stopped before it penetrates into the building.
I'm not that up on the acoustics issue, but I, the reason I bring this up is because I thought that a wall would not only address the sound issues, but would, you know, be a better deterrent perhaps than a fence for safety issues.
I'll let Mr. Roche continue to talk more about the the fencing and the safety issues. We don't have any issue with the fence, and we think the fence is more than adequate. But in terms of the sound, we are confident that the the approach we're taking, which is a consistent approach on, you know, many other buildings that are in construction that we're building currently, it's 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 a proven method, ineffective method.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Kartika?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do any other board members have any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Ito, do you have anything before we move on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Leblanc, if you have another witness, please.
Thank you very much.
There we go. Our next witness is Dan Disario, our our traffic engineer. Dan, there he is. Okay. Could you swear a man, Mr. Dominguez?
Sure. Dan, can you please name, say your last name for the record?
Certainly. My name is Dan, D A N, last name is Disario, D I S A R I O.
Mr. Disario, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Have his credentials changed since the last meeting?
They have not, Madam Chair.
Then you're accepted as an expert witness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Disario, just please describe your role in the project and start your testimony regarding the your traffic impact study.
Certainly. For the record, again, Dan Disario, I am the traffic consultant for this project and the applicant. As the board is aware, we prepared the traffic study dated January twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, as part of the site plan application materials that you have received. I'll be happy to answer any detailed questions in that study. I don't intend to go into great detail as it relates to the components of that study because, quite frankly, if you look at holistically what is being proposed, it's a new school that's going to serve existing students within the city. So trips are being made today to other schools in the area. As the board's aware, this school, in terms of its fourth through eighth population, is replacing the former Lincoln Annex School, which was up at Somerset in Hardenberg. Will also accommodate additional students that are attending other schools within the city in the grades K through three. So when you look at it holistically in terms of citywide, there won't be any more pedestrian trips generated across the city. There won't be any more vehicular trips, whether it be by teachers and staff or parents dropping off and picking up their children across the city. What you will have is a reorientation of those trips with a focus, obviously, along Jersey Avenue, and in particular, this school property. The study that we have conducted does not take any credit for any existing trips that are being made to other schools, whether they be vehicular or pedestrian, because we felt it was vitally important to set forth a conservative analysis as it relates to the traffic study. Just briefly, in terms of some of the highlights, you did hear from the architect, the student population will range from the order of nine hundred to eleven hundred students, approximately one hundred and ten employees consisting of teachers and staff. You heard from Mr. Roche, approximately three large buses, largely transporting gifted and talented students from around the city, and four small buses, which are largely going to transport special education students. Another important component as it relates to assessing traffic impacts that I think is important for not only the board and the professionals, but also the public to understand, is that when you compare the location of the Lincoln Annex School to where the students that attended that school live, and you compare this proposed school location to where those students live, this proposed school location is closer to more students than the Lincoln Annex location was. In other words, more students will have a shorter walk, or parents will have a shorter drive to get to this proposed school location than if the Lincoln Annex School were still in operation. I think that's a very important aspect to this proposal. The Board of Ed has done a stellar job, in my estimation, in terms of identifying where students live, and this location better serves the majority of those students. Granted, some students that live up and around the neighborhoods near Lincoln Annex will have a longer walk, or their parents will have a longer drive, but the overwhelming majority of the students and parents that would be served by this new school location would benefit immensely as compared to the former Lincoln Annex School site. We did do comprehensive traffic counts and a comprehensive study of the surrounding intersections. Our study area essentially consisted of the Jersey Avenue corridor from Delevan Street proceeding north up into the French Street corridor and ended at the Lewis Street and Sudan Street intersection. We looked at all the major intersections along those sections of Jersey Avenue as well as French Street. The basis of our study is a comprehensive set of traffic counts that were done Tuesday, November tenth, from six to nine in the morning and two thirty to six in the afternoon and evening. We supplemented those counts, understanding that COVID was still impacting traffic volumes in November of last year with data that we had in our position possession for the French Street corridor back from January of twenty Street Corridor back from January of 2020. And we also looked at DOT data along Jersey Avenue back in August 2017. Collectively looking at all of that data, we adjusted the traffic counts that were done in November of last year to reflect current conditions. And we did that by adjusting those traffic counts anywhere from 10 to 35%. In other words, we took those counts and we increased them by 10 to 35%, depending on the time of day, whether it was morning or afternoon slash evening, and what direction the particular movement was occurring. So we adjusted northbound volumes a lot higher than those that were in southbound direction. We assumed the design year of 2023, so we took those adjusted existing volumes and increased them by 1% per year to account for background traffic growth. We also accounted for specific traffic attributed to the Plum Street Medical Office Building Project, as well as the Cancer Institute Project, which the board is familiar with. We conservatively looked at not only published data for schools, but also operational data that the Board of Ed has for the intended operation of the proposed school. And then boil it down in very simple terms, in terms of round numbers, during the morning peak hour for the school, we would anticipate about 250 vehicles would come in and out, consisting of cars as well as the minimal amount of buses. And during the evening slash afternoon, about 125 vehicles would come in and go out. And again, those are round numbers. And overwhelmingly, we would anticipate that the majority of students would get to this proposed new school location via walking. So we are anticipating a little over 700 walking trips during the morning peak hour and a little over 400 walking trips in the afternoon peak hour. Now, given that there's going to be a reorientation of trips, not only in terms of pedestrian but vehicular, we're really charged with assuring the students, the parents, as well as all interested stakeholders, that this proposed site can function, not only from a vehicular and access perspective, which is important, but I would respectfully submit to you that accommodating pedestrians is even more important in this specific instance. With that, we are proposing a new traffic signal at the intersection of Jersey Avenue and Hale Street. And as Mr. Roach indicated, that signal will not only cater to vehicular traffic, but more importantly, it's going to cater to pedestrian traffic. There will be crosswalks along all four legs of that intersection. And there will also be pedestrian signal heads, as well as pedestrian buttons on all four corners. We think that's important because essentially that intersection is at the front door, so to speak, of the school itself. So we do anticipate the majority of traffic, as well as pedestrian volumes, will traverse that specific intersection to access the school property and the instance of the pedestrians to access the front door of the school. We did identify in the study that the intersection of French Street and Lewis Streets slash Sudan Street could benefit from some traffic signal timing adjustments, and we would certainly work with the county to explore those. And ultimately, it would be the county's approval to implement any changes at that location. In terms of all the other intersections that we evaluated, we did not find any significant impacts as a result of this school. And again, our analysis is very conservative because we have not taken any credit for any existing trips that may have been made during the time of the counts by parents and students that were oriented to other schools, in particular, the Lincoln Annex. And I would leave you with this, and this is customary practice for all new schools, the Board of Ed is going to work closely with the Police Department to create pedestrian walking plans, so that safe walking paths will be identified for students and their parents to go to and from the school and their places of residence. Those, that work will include identifying crossing guard locations that are appropriate in terms of those safe walking paths that are identified. And obviously, those crossing guards and the one that would be stationed at Hale and Jersey Avenue would supplement the new signal that is proposed as part of this project. In addition, school staff will coordinate with parents and provide information in the form of maps and meetings to fully inform and engage the parents of students and to discuss the safe walking paths and where crossing guards would be stationed. In addition, it's my understanding that the school will also have staff available during the first few days of each school year to walk with parents and students along the safe walking paths that have been identified in conjunction with the Police Department. And with that, I would conclude my direct testimony. I would be happy to answer any questions that the board or your professionals have.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Liebling, did you have anything to say before I ask our professionals on board?
No, please, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Do any of our professionals have any questions for this witness?
No, just commentary, Madam Chair, it's Charlie Carley. I'll concur with Mr. Disario's testimony and also Mr. Roach's, the circulation around the school of having young children and having dropped them off at grammar school and high school, admittedly dated layouts, the circulation around this school, I think, is superior or would be superior in terms of parents in cars or school buses. I think the site plan puts a premium on that. And the addition of the signal at Hale and Jersey Avenue is a significant investment in traffic flow. So I think from a traffic perspective, this layout works, and I think it works well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carley. Mr. Blatcher, do you have anything?
Just two quick questions for Mr. Disario. The first one, Dan, is I think you said 700 walkers are anticipated?
Approximately in the morning.
In the morning, okay. And then out of 1100 students, so there'd be about 400 vehicle students, either coming by bus or by parent vehicles.
Okay. In addition to the staff that.
In addition to the staff, okay. I'm just, my overall concern, and Mr. Roach might also weigh in on this too, is I just want to make sure that the design of the site, that we have enough stacking capacity for all these school buses. And I heard the testimony before that there would be three full buses. I'm just trying to figure out how we get, how we get that many students on just three full buses and four small buses.
The, as Mr. Roach testified to, the north side of the building is the bus drop-off area. Now, the rendering shows angled parking with cars occupying spaces.
Okay.
But those parking spaces will not be occupied during school start time, when the buses are dropping students off, or dismissal time when buses are picking students up to take them home. So that entire north side of the building will be exclusively dedicated to the buses.
Okay. And how is the, how are they going to keep vehicles out of there? Is it through signage or how are vehicles, if someone gets to the school at 6:30 in the morning, how do they?
That's going to be a.
Have they noted not park there?
That's going to be an operations issue in terms of enforcing that. We can certainly add signage if that's something the board or yourself would like to see. I can tell you, and as Mr. Carley said, I'm also the father of two kids. They're 23 and 21 now, but I do pass my kids' elementary school and I do harken back to the memories of, yeah, you would drop them off separate from where the buses were, and you knew you were not allowed to go into the area of the buses during the drop-off time in the morning or the pickup time in the afternoon. And that was reinforced numerous times throughout the year through various means.
Okay. So my other question is the new intersection that we're creating at the corner of Hale and Jersey. On the school property, there's a driveway that approaches that new intersection. There's a dedicated turning lane to make lefts, and there's dedicated to make right turns. But the area to the, I'm going to say the south of that, it narrows down to a single lane. And my concern is that, you know, you're going to have to take a look at that, that intersection there, because I would think that there really needs to be two lanes there, one to make the left, one to make the right. I think you'd have to do some curb work to maybe move some of the curbing to create wider traffic lanes. I'm not sure that the driveway that connects the parking lot to the commercial site, right by that, the mouth of the driveway, it can stay there. I think there's, there's some, we have to do some additional looking at this driveway and how it's going to interact with that intersection.
This is Charlie again. I would say to, towards Mr. Blatcher's concern, because it's County Road, Jersey Avenue, probably the lead agency is going to be the great county of Middlesex on that, and I'm sure that the county engineer will cross his t's and not his i's on that.
Did any, any plans to just widen the curbing there to make it? I think Mr. Carley's right, but I just, you know, if they ask you to do that, are you going to be willing to do that?
I think if they require us to do it, we're going to have to do it.
Okay. I'm just concerned that when it narrows down to one lane, the stacking is going to be all the way around the building if you have, at the peak hour, waiting to make a turn at that, at that intersection.
Well, most of the people that will be dropping off and picking up aren't going to exit there. There's a exclusive drop-off area that wraps around the west side of the building, and they would be coming directly out onto Jersey Avenue, if you see in that rendered site plan.
I do. So you think that intersection would be most heavily used during the PM, when, when, when the vehicles are leaving the parking lot?
And would be associated with staff leaving, correct?
Okay, okay. All right, well, I think that's, I think the counties should, should, should take a close look at that, because I think it's, it's something that could be improved. So that's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Blatcher. Do any board members have any questions?
Bob Cardica?
Yes, Bob.
So first, I'm glad you answered my first question, which was, I was glad to hear that this location is more proximate, I guess is the word, to the student population. That was my, my first concern. That's good to hear. Secondly, with regard to your traffic analysis, I assume you took into consideration this new controlled intersection. But, you know, what about all these other intersections and associated crossing guards, who I assume would be present there? Again, I know that the, the priority, of course, is the, is the, the safety of the students, but, you know, people are going to do what they need to do to avoid traffic. And I know this, I know this area intimately because, you know, pre-COVID, I commuted by it every day, you know, twice a day, going south towards Trenton. And I can tell you that if, that if, if I ever do commute again, and I know that light is there, I'm going to do what I can to avoid that light, you know? I'm going to, I'm going to travel like probably on French Street and just try to avoid that light entirely. Does it, I mean, do you, you take these crossing guards and, and kind of the, you know, the, the alternate strategies that commuters and other folks will, will pursue in order to avoid these backups with school buses and crossing guards and students and, you know, that sort of thing? It just seems like it's a, it's a happenin' place, that, that, that location. It just seems like, you know, putting in, forget about just the school or anything else, just putting a light in there could really like throw a monkey wrench into the operations there. It's quite heavily used, that area.
And I think you bring up a good point, Mr. Cardica. And the reality of this area of the city, particularly when the new school goes in, if the boards include and grant approval, is, is what you just articulated. I think philosophically, the city, I would think would agree that the French Street Corridor, now the Jersey Avenue Corridor, at least this end of it with the school and the retail in this area, this really becomes a pedestrian area. And I think pedestrians have to be weighed more heavily, for lack of a better descriptor, than moving cars, particularly along French Street, because you have a lot of businesses along French Street, you have on-street parking, and it's a, you're right, it's a very vibrant area. There's a lot of pedestrians that walk up and down French Street. There's a lot of pedestrians that walk up and down Jersey Avenue because of the retail and now with the new school. And the reality of that area, particularly during school time, when kids are coming in the morning and leaving in the afternoon, is that this area should be favoring pedestrians over vehicles. And I think when the school is dismissing in the afternoon or when kids are walking in the morning, it will disrupt traffic. But in my opinion, that's not a bad thing, and we should be catering to those pedestrians and ensuring, obviously, that they have safe paths to get to and from where they live in this new school location. And it's not going to be atypical to New Brunswick or this area of the city. Anyone that lives near a school can tell you, and I can personally, because I live less than a quarter mile from where my kids went to grammar school and middle school, you know, when school is basically starting in the morning or dismissing in the afternoon, you're going to endure some traffic issues. They're short-lived, they're shortened duration, but nonetheless, they're part and parcel to the presence of the school. And you would hope that the motorists and the drivers would be respectful of that fact and, and drive accordingly. You can't design for everyone. You always are going to have people that are looking to make, take shortcuts and avoid traffic signals. But in the end, you have to accommodate the pedestrians. It makes sense to put the new signal in. And the reality is, at least as it relates to pedestrians, that signal, most of the time of the day, is going to be green to Jersey Avenue. When the school has its highest activity in the morning and afternoon, it won't be green to Jersey Avenue most of the time, because pedestrians are going to be crossing. And that's okay, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm just kind of concerned about that, because I just, I just know, I know the traffic really well in that area. And, you know, people do what they have to do to avoid getting, getting stuck in traffic, and it results in secondary impacts that, you know, I'm assuming a, a traffic engineer is, you know, figures into this whole thing, so.
And we do. And you brought it up, another good point, and I think you're a perfect example of it, and I am as well. Yeah, I used to commute to the office every day, every day of the week. I worked down in Lawrenceville, I live in South Brunswick. I was up and down the Route 1 corridor every day, at least twice a day. And the new reality with this pandemic, and my firm has, has really understood, and we're lucky, we continue, we can continue to be productive and efficient without having to necessarily be in the office. So I think, on the whole, you're going to see a reduction in traffic volume moving forward once we get back to normal times, quote unquote, particularly in the morning. I think in the afternoon, particularly later in the evening, people are, are still going out and making shopping trips, so I don't think you're going to see as big a reduction in the evening, in terms of the evening commute time. But I do think you're going to see a big reduction in morning volumes on the whole because of the pandemic and, and the newfound discovery of people being able to telecommute and not necessarily. people being able to telecommute and not necessarily losing productivity because of that.
And if I may, I think that when you dig into the reporting and I'll rely on Mr. Desario to correct me if I'm wrong. The, the peak hours of the school are not the same as the peak hours for commuters. And Jersey Avenue, the train station, of course, is a big driver of traffic on this run of Jersey Avenue. Typically, in elementary schools, a nine to three thirty affair with the peaks at nine and then three thirty, the buses, the pedestrians, et cetera. Whereas for Jersey Avenue, it's typically seven, seven thirty to six or so. But I'll, I'll leave that to Mr. Desario to flesh out.
Mr. Carly, you make a good point as well. The, the volumes on the surrounding streets, based on the traffic counts we did in November, as well as the historical data. Seven forty-five to eight forty-five generally is the hour where they are the highest. Students are going to report to this school starting at eight fifty. So you're going to catch the tail end of the street peak hour, but you're going to catch the tail end of it. So I do agree with you. I think area volumes, particularly along Jersey Avenue, are driven by the Jersey Avenue Station in this area and the school is largely going to be having its highest activity well after all that traffic associated with Jersey Avenue has died down.
Mr. Cardica, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions?
This is Matt Ferguson. I just have a few quick questions for Mr. Desario. Is the intersection at Delavan and Jersey Avenue signaled?
It is not.
So are there any recommended either signage or signal enhancements for pedestrians planned or advised for that interception?
Not in our study, but I believe that will be an intersection that is part of the Board of Education's coordination with the Police Department to determine if a crossing guard is required at that location and if the, that intersection's part of the safe paths that they identify.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm not sure, it might just be omitted from the actual drawing, but is there a marked crosswalk at Comstock and Jersey Avenue? It's not on the rendering, so to speak, but I imagine there is one there, but just wanted to kind of check on that.
Across the Comstock legs, there are existing crosswalks. There are none existing or proposed across Jersey Avenue. The, the, the idea is to get students walking to the Hale Street intersection and then cross there because that's where the front door of the school is. But again, the Comstock intersection will be part of the Board of Ed and Police Coordination to determine if a crossing guard needs to be posted at that intersection as well.
And if it was determined that the majority of the pedestrian traffic was coming more from the Sanford-Delavan direction, would you recommend that there be some sort of pedestrian signals installed at that Delavan intersection?
I would not. I would recommend a crossing guard be posted there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Desario.
You're welcome.
Do any other board members have any questions?
This is Bob Cardica. Is it still possible to ask a question for the LSRP? Or did I miss my chance to do that?
Well, let, let's just finish with the architect and then we'll go back to Mr. Lebleng and then, well, I'll do that again before we move to the public. Okay, Bob?
Thank you, yes.
Of course. Do we have any other questions for the, for Dan? I'm sorry, I said architect too.
That's okay.
Hearing none, Mr. Lebleng. Do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, I don't have anyone new, but I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to bring back Chris Roche. I, I was not happy with the answers that we were able to give the Mr. Bletcher and Mr. Cardica regarding the evacuation space and the evacuation area. It, it kind of, we had, we had our architect up who's really focused on the building rather than on site issues. And during Mr. Desario's testimony, I spoke with Mr. Mr. Roche and asked him to please do some, some calculations regarding this question. So I'd like to bring him back for some additional direct testimony, just to provide satisfactory responses to to those two questioners, as well as the rest of the board and the public on how space-wise we can, the, the school can handle the evacuation for fire drills and so forth. So okay, Mr. Roche?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Lebleng. So the two areas we really plan to store the students in evacuary period are on the eastern portion of the site. We have two large grass areas on opposite sides of the parking lot. They're not within the parking lot. One area on the southern side is ninety-five hundred square feet. The area on the northern side is thirty-five hundred square feet. Close to thirteen thousand square feet of grass lawn area. Within that thirteen thousand square feet, we have the ability to store approximately thirteen hundred people if we need to. And that's assuming around ten square feet per person. The other thing, I'll note, you know, some of the existing schools do do their evacuation storage in parking lots. However, given the site layout that we have, we agree with Mr. Bletcher, it makes more sense to do this outside the parking lot areas, which is why we're proposing to aforementioned grassed areas on the eastern portion of the site.
Thank you, Mr. Roche. He's available for any follow-up questions by, 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 you know, anyone at this point.
Do any of the board members or professionals have questions for Mr. Roche regarding his testimony? I'm hearing none, Mr. Lebleng. Do you have any other witnesses?
Thank you. I can bring up, bring Neil Rivers back up if, if now is the appropriate time. I don't have any additional additional witnesses, but if you wanted me to bring up Mr. Rivers to respond to Mr. Cardica's question, I can do that now. Okay, with a snap of my fingers, he appears and sure, Mr. Cardica, Mr. Rivers is available.
Yes, thank you. So just with regard to comparison of this location compared to say, other previously developed urban locations within the city limits. Based in, on, on your statement that, you know, this site is, is kind of characteristic of many other such locations within the city, would you? Would you say that, that the, that the remediation required at this location would be the same, or I guess you can't say the same, but would be similar to what you would encounter at any other previously developed urban location with historic fill within the city, within the city limits?
I, I, in fact, I would say very much so, but with a little bit of a, of a difference here. New Jersey, as I mentioned earlier, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, under their regulations, the technical regulations for site remediation, has established what are referred to as presumptive remedies for schools, daycares and residential communities. So essentially, what the presumptive remedies are, are a slightly more comprehensive, complete remediation that's done for these populations that are a more sensitive population. So, so to your question, similar in, in nature to any other site that we would see in, in, in the community that, that had historic fill. But with this additional overlay that New Jersey DEP requires a thicker cap than might be normal in another place. It's still capping, but it's a little bit thicker. That's really the biggest difference.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, to hear whether you feel that what you'd be encountering here would be similar in other, if, if the school were cited at another location, you'd be running, you'd be dealing with the same issues and it sounds like the answer is yes.
Yes, from my experience, yes, very much so.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cardica. Do any board members have any questions for any of the professionals who testified tonight? And do any of our professionals have any additional questions at this point?
Madam Chair, this is Todd Bletcher. I just have one final question. I'm sorry to hold things up. Just one, one comment of the, on the plan report. We had a question about the, the digital sign in front of the building. Maybe someone can just clarify this digital sign. What it's going to be and how, how quickly it's going to change its message.
Yeah, Mr. Bletcher. So yeah, I testified to the size of the sign and that'll be a double-sided digital display sign. It will be, it, it will conform with the requirements set forth in the signage standards for that non-flashing. Besides that, there, the sign has not been programmed to, to this point. So to your question on, you know, how frequently it will change. You know, we could definitely work with the, with the amount to determine, you know, what that number of seconds is between, you know, changing visual. And we would comply. And if there's, obviously, if there's any issue or concern, you know, that could be brought to the attention of the district to, at a, at a, at a time later on. But it, it's totally programmable and it could be adjusted to fulfill whatever the requirements are.
Sure, I just, I just like to have that sign, especially because it's so close to the traffic signal that, that that sign's not going to be flashing messages or sort of scrolling, you know, LED sort of things that scroll across with the message and not have any like red or green or yellow, you know, flashes that might distract a driver or, or interfere with the you know, the, the traffic that's there. I'd like for it to be a static message that lasts for a certain period of time, say, you know, every five minutes that the, the message changes or something like that, where it's not like every ten seconds, we're getting a new flash.
Mr. 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 Desario, do you know whether or not there, this is DOT regulations regarding signs like this?
Yes, there are, but they're really for highway context as opposed to, and I know this is a county route. But the DOT regulations probably don't necessarily pertain, but they certainly can provide a benchmark. And I, I understand what Todd's saying.
As do I. I'm just, I'm just trying to pick, I'm just trying to find a standard that we can say, we'll agree to, we'll agree to the following. So, so and rest easy.
We could look at DOT. A lot of DOT is relative to the LED big billboards. So there are flat, minimum flash rates where you can't have flashing messages that are shorter than a certain amount of seconds. So yeah, we could work through that with, with Todd and Kurt to come up with something.
Is that, is that, is that an acceptable solution that will, the, the Board of Ed will, with the Board's professionals to develop a unacceptable sign protocol?
That's certainly okay by me.
Okay, I'm sure that will be fine.
Do I have any other questions for any of the professionals at this point? Mr. Lebleng, do you have a closing before we open it up to the public?
Um, I, again, I would just like to, you know, thank you and express our appreciation for your attention to the application this evening. As we know, the, you know, we have not requested any variances. Our, our preliminary and final site plan does comply with the redevelopment plan. And it's therefore by law entitled to an approval subject to reasonable conditions. We believe we've, we've demonstrated that to you and we request that you approve the application this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we're going to open up the, this portion of the meeting to the public for public comments relating to the testimony of the witnesses that you just heard from only. And Dan, will you please create a list?
Thank you. All right. At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment on this hearing for up to five minutes per person. In order to assure that the planning board can hear from the interested public and the public can hear public comments, I'll organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute. Folks will be able to unmute themselves in the public comments, start on the phone, a little microphone, if you're on, if you're on computer. At that time, I will ask those with last names starting with A to provide your last name, first name and home address. And I will confirm the information is correct and move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. Upon completion of asking for all last names from A to Z, I'll ask for anyone who may want to be placed on an initial list of speakers that we may have missed. We will then, through the list of speakers, by calling each person by name and permitting them five minutes to speak, once the list is public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted and speaks slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I'll ask that you please remain silent while folks are initially unmuting themselves. And now that everyone is unmuted, I will ask that any member of the public on the phone or on video would like to comment on this hearing with last name letter A. To please state your last name, first name, last name and home address. A.
Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, I, can I just ask, is this going to be the only opportunity for comments or is this the first of two different?
This is the public comment on the hearing and then there will be a public comment for the meeting.
Okay, but only one for the hearing. So we get five minutes to ask questions of all four witnesses and make our own comments. And you won't pause the clock when other people are speaking besides the, the person.
That's correct.
Wait, 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 wait. The clock will not be paused, correct?
Yeah.
Clarify that. And as far as, we don't know how many people will be speaking, so we don't know how, how long we have for each individual.
Okay, so you haven't decided yet how, how much time?
If you wanted to continue with the alphabet.
All right, so back to the back to list A. B. C. D.
Hi, I've got one. My, my name is Nishad Data. My address is forty-six Allen Street.
All right, thank you. E. F. G. H. I. J. K.
Charlie Cradaville, Sedam Street.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. L. M. N. O. P. Q. R. S.
Linda Stork, Vell Park Boulevard.
All right, Miss Stork. T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. Right now, we have Nishad Data, Charlie Cradaville, Linda Stork. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this specific hearing who did not make it onto that list? Anyone at all? Seeing none, the list is now closed. Seeing as there's only three people, I do recommend that we can give them the five minutes, Madam Chair. And then we could proceed through public comment.
Yes, we can do five minutes and Mr. Data, you're up first.
I'm, I'm sorry, you need me to spell my last name?
Yes, please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
Nishad Data, Data spelled D-A-T-T-A.
All right. Nishad Datic, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You're on.
All right, I believe my questions are going to be for Mr. Rivers. My questions are specifically about tetrachloroethylene. And I believe that he's the best person to answer them. But if anybody else, any of the other witnesses are more qualified to answer these questions, please feel free to jump in. Mr. Rivers, you said that any contamination on the site is similar to other already developed areas in New Brunswick and in similar municipalities. But tetrachloroethylene is a commonly found ingredient in dry cleaning solution and this site is directly adjacent to a laundromat. So how can you say for sure?
Let me clarify that the question that was asked of me related to the material in the historic fill. And, and the tetrachloroethylene is not material in, in historic fill. So that's the distinction.
Okay, are we aware of how many parts per million are present at the site?
It is actually in the low parts per billion. So literally a thousand times lower than the parts per million. And that's in groundwater and it does not extend far onto the property. As I testified, there was one monitoring well right on the intersection of the corner of Comstrux Street and the site where the compound was detected. But additional wells on the property, including those that were less than 75 feet away, do not exhibit the tetrachloroethylene in groundwater.
Okay, thanks. I think, one second. I had written this down. Can you elaborate anymore on the current contamination on the site and like any other chemicals that might have been present?
The, the chemicals present in historic fill are hydrocarbon type compounds typical of, of coal or, or fuel. Compounds that are, that are poly nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons, long term for, for these types of generally constituents of, of coal and fill. There are also metals. Many of those metals are typical of naturally occurring in soil, but at higher concentrations. So we have low concentration or elevated concentrations, for example, of lead and cadmium on the site.
Okay, thanks so much. And I, my next question is, I guess, more generally for any of the witnesses that have come up. But is there any idea as to when the project will be completed?
Yeah, I, I can respond. I mean, it's, it's, it's targeted for mid 2024, the completion. It was starting, starting later this year.
Okay, so at least three and a half years from now. So my next question is, you know, studies have proven that dislocated children often underperform. Will this school offer any special facilities to get children up to speed?
I don't believe there's anyone on, on this call who's able to testify to the curriculum. It's outside the site plan review process.
I see. And finally, were there any other sites considered for this particular plan?
I would just correct, sorry, this school will open in 2023, not 2024. So that was, that was my typo. The, the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed reviewed, I think, I believe at the end it was narrowed down to two sites that they were, that they were evaluating and they selected this one.
Is there, can you provide a location for the other site or is that?
Um, I, I think it's all, it's all available from, you know, the Board of Ed's materials. It's not, it's not for this board to decide that we pick.
All right, well, thanks to the board and to all the witnesses for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, next speaker is Mr. Charlie Cradaville. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right. Charlie Cradaville, please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Charlie Cradaville, K R A T O V I L.
Mr. Cradaville, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You're on.
Is the Board of Education sent a representative tonight to be able to answer questions or no?
We don't, we don't have, we don't have them as a witness tonight.
No testimony from the Board of Ed, didn't even care to, to, to show up to be able to answer questions. What is the budget for the project?
The, the amount that was deposited for school construction, which, you know, stated in other, other forms is $55 million.
And how much of that has already been spent?
I don't know. And nor do I understand the relevance of that.
I want to make sure that a school actually gets built.
There's a lot of people who want to make sure of that.
Okay. And are you confident that 55 million would be enough to complete the project?
That, that was, that was what, that was what the analysts who arrived at that number all determined. That would be the developer and the Board of Ed as well as the state.
And Robert Wood Johnson, who put up the money. For the LSRP, when did you become involved in the project?
I became involved in the project approximately a year ago.
Okay. And so were you involved in the creation of this environmental impact statement that's part of the, the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And can you tell me where in this document is there any information or mention of the groundwater contamination issue that you, you mentioned?
Just one moment. I don't have, I don't have a copy of that readily available to me. Give me a moment, I'll look for it.
Okay, I'll let you do that and I'll, I'll move on to other questions. Maybe you'll have the answer when I'm done.
Let me help you. It's section 2.7 relates to site contamination existing conditions.
Okay, and where does it mention groundwater?
Well, I, I assume you have a copy, Mr. Cradaville. So why don't you ask a question about, about the, the information that's in here?
Yeah. Does it say anything about groundwater contamination in section 2.7, the one you just cited?
I don't, I don't see any, but I, I read fairly well. I'm not the witness, but I want to share with you.
It, it does not.
Okay.
Because the source of groundwater, the groundwater contamination is from offsite. Onsite, as I testified, the onsite wells all exhibited groundwater qual, they all achieved the groundwater quality standards.
Well, I'm looking at a document from the last LSRP on this project and it says that any redevelopment on this site should take into consideration the potential for vapor intrusion from the groundwater contamination. This was a notice that was dated February 8, 2019. And I'm just curious why, you know, with all your, your years of experience, this lengthy document would not include any mention of the groundwater contamination issue because it's offsite? That's, is that, is that typical? You, if you have a groundwater contamination issue offsite, you don't even mention it in the statement?
What, what I did mention in my testimony is, is that, is that although the groundwater contamination was offsite and did not exceed the triggers that would require the implementation of a vapor intrusion mitigation system, the, the project has been developed and designed with the intention to install such a system, which would be appropriate and protective for the TC and PC and groundwater.
Right. And none of that is in the environmental impact statement.
One minute, just.
I do appreciate efforts to address vapor intrusion, but I'm, I'm asking why none of this was included in the documentation that we all got to review for this?
Again, the focus was on the onsite constituents of concern.
Okay, well, I, I think that given the warning that the last LSRP gave us, we should, we should be vigilant and we should have included that. And, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, cautious about the situation because, you know, I, 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 I don't think I've gotten a satisfactory explanation for why it wasn't in here. And I do think that, you know, the, the public deserves full transparency. I'm glad Mr. Bledcher asked his questions. I'm glad that you ended up testifying. I don't know if that was originally the plan. But I, I, I think that it was, this issue in particular, the groundwater contamination was glossed over in this statement. And I think that the, the board should proceed with caution because of that. You know, we need a school, but.
The time's up, Mr. Cradaville. Who's next on the list, Dan?
Speaker on the list is Ms. Linda Stork. Linda, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Sure, Linda Stork, S T O R K.
Ms. Stork, do you swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You're on.
But I'm actually asking questions. So, okay, about the environmental waiver, why, why was, oh, there are waiver requests for the phase one environmental report? Is that, is that something different? That was not submitted?
I, I can, as the, as the attorney on the application and, you know, the, you know, having requested that waiver, it, it basically, it seemed unnecessary to, to submit it. You know, as customary, we, we submitted the environmental impact statement. Key, key issues from the phase one report are addressed in that. Second, this is a public school being built for a public entity. The Board of Ed made its own determinations that the environmental condition of the site was acceptable for a school, provided the needed remediation is carried out. The Board of Ed submitted its phase one to the State Department of Education in support of its application to have the school approved. And that was satisfactory. By law, the Board of Ed is required, it through its contractor, to comply with NJDEP regulations. And as you heard, there are specialized remedies for school properties and the Department of Children and Families also are bound by the Madden legislation, which has additional requirements. Our construction contract does require us to comply with all this. This board is going to require us to comply with all environmental requirements and the school can't be opened until, until all of these, these conditions have been satisfied with respect to remediation. So you heard the environmental issues at the site are typical. They're being overseen through a separate process by the NJDEP. The applicant's aware of the nature of the contamination. They're developing remedial action work plan to assess it. It seemed as though pretty much every angle on the environmental was covered. And our environmental expert has, has testified them, to them as well. So we believe there is more than adequate information in the record to provide comfort to this board that, that this property will be properly remediated. You know, it's not something that, that a planning board is equipped to oversee. It is, it, it is undertaken under the NJDEP oversight. And it's not, remediation plans are not part of site plan review.
Okay, thank you. I don't understand why a waiver would be needed for something. Why not just make the report? But I have a lot of things to cover in five minutes. So as far as the traffic, which is already pretty much a nightmare, you can't go by November because the, the traffic has been nothing compared to what it usually is. And that one intersection at Sedam or Lewis Street and French Street is horrible. It's, it's horrible. And this is because it is, it will overlap more than you think, the rush hour. Because our kids don't come to school at 8:50. They have to be there by 8:30 to eat breakfast. And they actually start coming around eight. So that's the, you know, that's the time that people are going to that train station out there. So it's more of a conflict than you might think. And the other thing is, I have a question for the architect about the cafeteria. What is the capacity of the cafeteria?
The the capacity of the cafeteria is 350?
Yeah, because if there's going to be 1,100.
Right, but there's, there's seating groupings. It's a range.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a problem. And, and is there some kind of arrangement to get the kids to, for them all to get their food on time? Because it's, this is, at one point, a comment was made about, oh, 1,100, you know, is not that, 1,100 is an enormous amount of students for an elementary school. And especially for the younger grades. It's just, it's unheard of for a school to be built at that size now for these grades. That just, I mean, it's going to be kind of a logistical nightmare. There can't be more than three lunch periods. So, yeah.
That would equal three. That would equal three.
Not an equal three?
That would equal, that would equal.
Yeah, that would equal three, right. So you have to have, yeah, so you have to have.
That, that's a scheduling issue and the, that the district's well aware of.
Well, it's one they haven't been able to solve. But there are other schools, which are smaller, by the way, and they haven't been able to solve it. And right, and so that brings me to the size of, okay, so $55 million.
That was time.
Your time is up, Ms. Stork.
Can we not count all the answer to my first question, which was way longer than, just have one more question?
Your time is up. You can still make comments during the other public comment portion if you'd like. So that concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. That was the last one. Dan?
Yes, there are, there are no more commenters.
Okay. So do we have any board discussion on this application? Does anybody want to make a comment or any additional questions at this point?
Madam Chair, if I may read the, the instructions for the board prior to deliberations.
Sure.
Thank you. The conclusion of the applicant's case and after members of the public have had a reasonable opportunity to comment on the application, it is the duty of the board members to consider the application and to make its decision. At this point, the applicant has put in its testimony. Interested members of the public have had an opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses and to comment on the application. And at this point, the members of the board are advised that they are permitted to discuss and consider the merits of this application in full. Prior to this point, the members of the board were limited to listening to the testimony of the numerous witnesses and the comments of the public. Board members are permitted to only ask questions of the applicant up until the close of testimony and the closing of the public comment period. Now that the board has closed the public comment period and no additional testimonies being presented, the board members are permitted to discuss the evidence and testimony presented with each other. Board members are also advised that they may and should confer and ask questions of the board's staff and consulting professionals if they need clarification or further information about any matter related to this application. The board members may ask any questions or ask for information or clarification from its professional staff only. They may not ask for information or clarification of testimony from the applicant's witnesses or from members of the public. For example, if a member of the board would like to ask a procedural question or has a question regarding a professional's judgment on a technical issue, such as an engineering question or a planning question or a question of law or the city's ordinances, the board may ask those questions now. However, no additional testimony from the applicant or public can be entertained at this time unless a motion to reopen the hearing is made. In considering the application, the members of the board are advised that each case must be decided strictly on the basis of the facts deduced at the hearing, viewed in the light of the statutory and ordinance requirements. This board is a quasi judicial body whose function is to apply the facts deduced at the hearing to the legal requirements, requirements of the applicable statutes and ordinances and to decide whether any relief requested by the applicant referred to as a variance under municipal land use law can be granted. referred to as a variance under the municipal land use law, can be granted or not. This board should be advised that, as provided for in the municipal land use law, if an applicant seeks variance relief from the board, what this means is that the applicant is seeking permission from this board to depart from the literal requirements of the zoning ordinance. The facts deduced at the hearing, all testimony and all evidence on which the board makes its decision must be part of the record. And the board's decision must include findings of fact from the record on which it made its decision and conclusions on the points of law raised. The board's decision must be made in public at a public meeting. And the board's vote on the making of its decision and the adoption of its resolution must be taken in public at a public meeting also. What is before the board tonight for discussion and consideration is whether to approve applicant's major site plan application. In reviewing the site plan application, the planning board is limited to determining whether the plan meets the zoning and site plan ordinances. The process does not permit the board to prohibit a permitted use. Therefore, the board cannot deny approval of a site plan application without variances, as in this case, merely because it believes that the permitted use proposed by the applicant is not as preferred to another use or previous use. Neither can this board approve an application simply because it believes that the use proposed is desirable to other or previous uses. This board must only make its determination of whether to approve or deny the site plan application if it meets the zoning and site plan ordinances. And if the applicant does not meet the zoning and site plan ordinances, whether the applicant has met its statutory burden under the municipal land use law to warrant an approval. Specifically, if the site plan application indicates that the applicant cannot comply with all of the city's zoning and planning ordinances, the applicant must seek relief from this board to deviate from the zoning or site plan ordinances by applying for variance relief. For example, if the site plan application requires a variance from a condition or requirement in the city's zoning ordinance, the board is not required to approve the application. The applicant must produce evidence on the record indicating, for example, of an undue hardship or unique circumstances affecting the land or special reasons for the variance, depending on the nature of the relief sought. And the applicant must always show that the relief can be granted without detriment to the public welfare and without impairing the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. This board does not have the authority to deny approval of the site plan application on the basis of traffic generation if the proposed use on the site is permitted. In reviewing the site plan application, the board is limited by law to determining whether the plan conforms with the municipality's zoning and site plan ordinance. It cannot use its quasi-judicial power to prohibit a permitted use. In this specific application, the applicant is not seeking any variance relief from this board. That is, it is not seeking any permission to depart from the literal requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking approval of its site plan application and has placed testimony on the record that its site plan application conforms with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Denial of a site plan that conforms with the requirements of the site plan and zoning ordinance is considered a drastic action that is permissible only if there is authorization in the statute for denial. For example, if there was no adequate water supply for a particular tract of land proposing a development for human habitation, a site plan denial is permissible on that basis if the applicant does not provide a plan for providing water. Another example of a situation where denial would be permissible would be if a site plan impinges on public safety. For example, if the proposed development does not have any access roads and the applicant does not propose any access roads, thus making it impossible for a fire department to reach a proposed building on a site, then the denial would be appropriate. To summarize, you are asked to deliberate and discuss the application before you tonight, where the application is seeking site plan approval to construct a school structure that it proposes to use generally as a school. After you discuss and deliberate the specifics of this application, you have several options. This board may deny the application based on a specific and articulated determination that denial is permitted under the law and warranted under the facts. If you vote to deny the application, your reasons for denial must be based on the findings and that the application does not conform with the zoning ordinance and the applicable provisions of the site plan ordinance. This board may also move to grant the application for site plan approval, which may be done with or without the imposition of reasonable and permitted conditions of approval. If you vote to approve the application, you may do so with conditions, but those conditions must be derived from provisions in the zoning ordinance. Based on these instructions, I am available to answer any questions the members of the board may have at this time. I would recommend also that the board permit the board's professionals to provide any insight or input they may have on the technical aspects of the application. And I believe that Ms. Pinello has some conditions that she would like to read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Is Katie going to read the conditions now or?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm here. This is Katie. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to go over, I dotted down a few special conditions. I just wanted to go over the language of them real quick before we go through all the other conditions. I had documentation from an LSRP shall be submitted confirming that the site has been remediated to within NJDEP standards and in compliance with any other New Jersey state laws for the proposed use. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued without the certification. I also had applicant will work with board professionals to determine playground programming. And the Board of Education will work with board professionals to determine digital sign protocol.
I have some more, I guess, specific language for the sign. The applicant should work with the board's professionals to develop an acceptable protocol for the LED signage display frequency and display characteristics.
If I can just ask my team, if anything, in the way that those were expressed by Ms. Pinello, that
Yeah, please do.
Everyone okay with the way those were worded? Okay, hearing, hearing none.
And the traffic light?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is Todd Bletcher. Just the traffic light, is that going to be a condition of approval? That it's going to be installed and operating before the school opens?
Dan, can you weigh in on that?
I think we can agree to a condition to install the traffic light. Whether we can guarantee it's operational before the school opens, that's going to be subject to county review and approval. But we can certainly endeavor for that. In the event that traffic light isn't operational when the school opens, there will be a crossing guard posted there.
Mr. Bletcher, before we go any further into these conditions, I had some of the same concerns you had this evening. And, you know, you asked the questions, we got the answers. And I was under the impression for most of them that they would be handled with the appropriate parties as the project was progressing. Say, for instance, the police department, the Board of Education would work together for certain things, as well as with the continued work with the city. And I'm satisfied, it sounds like that is definitely the pattern where this is going. And were you satisfied with the answers that you received this evening?
Yes, I was, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
I'm sorry, Katie, I wanted to ask that before we got into the conditions too much. Do you want to continue with the conditions, Katie?
Sure. Okay, let me just start at the beginning. "Should the board act favorably on this application? We recommend the following conditions of approval: compliance with the terms of the DNR report dated February 3, 2021, and the city engineering report dated December 9, 2020 for the project; submission of any necessary easements and/or cross-access easement agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing of same; payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer; submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 1624-160; payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308; issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required; the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department; compliance with the terms of the Bignell Planning Report dated February 8, 2021 for the project; payment of a redevelopment fee to the City of New Brunswick if required; planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews; payment of any other fees due to the City of New Brunswick related to the development or use of this project; payment of all outstanding taxes and water sewer fees; Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver; DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver; Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver; any other agency approval or waiver as required, specifically the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection; submission of engineering or architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or planning amendments offered at the hearing, if any; execution of a Title 39 parking enforcement agreement; compliance with the city's water service system ordinance, Chapter 1304, per the New Brunswick Water Utility." And then, should I read the special conditions in again? Or are they taken care of by our prior discussion?
Can you just please read them again so it's coherent for everyone?
Sure. "The applicant will work with the board to determine playground, the board professionals to determine playground programming. The traffic light shall be installed at Jersey and Hale. If it is not a, I guess, a parking, or, I'm sorry, not parking. A crossing guard will be installed at that light if it's not, or at that location if it's not operational by the time the school opens. Documentation from an LSRP shall be submitted confirming that the site has been remediated to within NJDEP standards and in compliance with all New Jersey state laws for the proposed use. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued without the certification. The board will work, or the Board of Education will work with board professionals to determine digital sign protocol. All utilities and other site improvements will be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing to the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be clean if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking pad to be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks per the direction of the city engineer. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval. And there was a design waiver for foundation plantings. However, there were no variances requested as part of this application." And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Katie. Do any board members have anything they'd like to discuss? Any statements or any questions for our professionals?
Madam Chair, if I could just interject for a moment with respect to Katie's listing of conditions. I believe that we requested the deletion of Item 10I on the Bignell report from February 8 regarding the required ownership of the Eastern driveway by the Board of Ed in order to enable us to explore alternatives to that.
Well, can I just respond to that? Madam Chair, are you there? Can I just respond to that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, sorry. All right. That's okay, I don't know. I think what was said was that they're not agreeing to Item I, but they want to have further discussions on that. So it's not that the board's going to ignore that. It's their, they're requesting that be discussed further. That's fine with me. But, you know, my position is going to be that that property has got to remain, it's on the site, it's got to remain the Board of Ed's driveway. It's not going to be, you know, a public road that the city's going to take over.
I guess I'm unclear as to why, if that became an option, why that would be objectionable.
Madam Chair, this is Dan Burke, a city engineer. May I respond to that?
Yes, please do, Mr. Burke.
One of the concerns from the engineering department about the potential taking over is it doesn't meet the city's standards for right-of-way width, for one. And it butts directly up against an existing building in the adjacent commercial establishment. So it's got some negatives that would preclude the city from accepting it. It would not, in its current form, meet our standards. But we believe it would have to be retained by the Board of Education for those purposes.
So I guess we're just asking for flexibility on this, rather than having the planning board impose tonight any kind of potential future arrangement between the applicant and the city to make it, to give us that flexibility. And the way the language is drafted, that flexibility is taken away. We're not saying we would close the road. We're not saying we wouldn't use the road, as shown on the site plan. We're just simply trying to, you know, we have two and a half years to build the school to figure out the best way for that road's future to be ensured. So I just don't know why the planning board needs to insist on this ownership issue.
Yeah, it would seem to me, Madam Chair, that if the city does not have an interest in accepting this, that the applicant's choices are fairly limited. They've got to continue maintaining that property. So it should remain the property of the school operator or the Board of Education. However, if nothing in this language would preclude it, would seem to me, from the applicant seeking, you know, relief from the city, that is, the city saying, yeah, you know what, we will take that, it would just require a relief from the condition of this approval, which I believe that the governing body would supersede if they decided that they would, they would in fact take that. Am I missing something, Mr. Liebling?
No, I just don't want to be in violation of my approval. If the city was willing to take it, I just, you know, I mean
If, Mr. Liebling, if the property was going to be conveyed to a third party, not to the city, then I agree that this condition would make you, would put you in violation. But if the city decides, and it doesn't sound like the city will, will accept that road and the maintenance of that property and to accept it. If that's the case, then I think that the board's professionals have opined that it would make sense to make sure that you continue, you meaning that the applicant or the Board of Education continues to maintain that road, rather than have it somehow transferred to the adjacent commercial property at some point.
What if we added "or the city"? With that, the East driveway should remain property of the school operator, Board of Education, or the city?
Todd, would you be okay with language including "or the city", if acceptable to the city?
Absolutely, yes.
I think that's fine. I think we can discuss it further between the city and the applicant. I just don't want to be misrepresented as, on behalf of the city, accepting it if that condition goes away. It's going to have to, it's going to have to be figured out. That's fine by me.
Okay, thank you.
But wouldn't it, excuse me, let me just interject one thing for the two attorneys. Wouldn't it require, if it were to be conveyed back to the city, if that was an acceptable agreement? Wouldn't it be required to come back to the board for a modification to the subdivision?
It would have to come back for subdivision regardless.
That's my thinking. You're going to create a right-of-way, you're going to change the dimensions of the lot that's previously been subdivided. So it would require another board action, correct?
It would, even if it went to the city, because, Mr. Liebling, your property would be smaller. It'd be more intense. The use for the school and the ingress and egress would be, I guess, one of the conditions of the approval is that you want to have that means of ingress and egress available. If it does in fact go to the city, you'd have to come back for an amended approval.
Okay, you know, I didn't want to take up the board's or the public's time on this unnecessarily. We're just trying to maintain flexibility. It sounds like it's an issue that you're asking me to deal with when, if and when it arises.
Well, Mr. Liebling, it sounds like we've got the city engineer saying this just doesn't meet the standards for the city to take that road.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll I'll close. We can proceed.
Mr. Liebling, I, I lost you. Did you have anything else?
No, 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 I don't. We can go, Madam Chair, you were just starting to ask people for their, for their, any comments, so I, we can go back to that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any members of the board have any statements or comments they'd like to make? Well, I, I do, actually, and so I just wanted to say, you know, from a quality of life and economic viability perspective, I believe when plausible contaminated, uh, land should be remediated and developed. And in fact, the NJDEP sets the stand, sets the standard, um, that must be satisfied for that to happen. And if the developer cannot meet those requirements, then they will not be granted the necessary approval by that authority. And the planning board is not that authority, and we don't have jurisdiction over those matters. Um, the plan for the new school is permitted under the Jersey Handy Redevelopment Area Redevelopment Plan, and there are no variances attached to the application. And for those reasons, I will vote in the affirmative if the matter should be moved. I do also believe this is an outstanding project that will enhance the educational experience for students for many, many years to come. They will have the benefit of a brand-new building, state-of-the-art labs, gymnasium, classrooms, cafeteria, and an outdoor playground. We are fortunate to be able to offer this type of facility to our children free from taxpayer burden and during extremely difficult economic times when there is no state funding for new schools in our city. And I think it would be irresponsible to deny the children and the people of the city this opportunity with this, with this facility. And that is my statement. Does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, if there's a motion on the floor.
Chris Stiltelem, I'll make a motion.
Matt Ferguson, I'll second.
Lita Checo?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Suzanne Sikora-Ludwig?
Yes.
Chris Stiltelem?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Thanks to everyone. Much appreciated. Bob, I did, I didn't hear Bob's...
Yes.
Oh, sorry, thank you. No, I just didn't hear it on my end. All right.
Congratulations, Mr. Liebling.
Thank you all, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have discussion items by the board, and I don't believe we have any tonight, and so then we'll mo- move right into the, uh, public comment portion of the meeting. Dan, if you want to prepare a list.
All right, um, let me get the thing again. Uh, so once again, uh, at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to general public comment for five minutes per person. In order to ensure that the planning board can hear from the interested public and the public can hear public comments, I'll organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, the, uh, public calling will be unmuted, and both folks will be able to unmute themselves. At that time, I'll ask those with the last name starting with A to provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm the information is correct and move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. On completing for all last names from A to Z, I'll ask for anyone who would like to be placed on initial list of speakers that we may have missed. We will then move through the list of speakers by calling person by person and permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, we'll close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. My last, please remain silent when I initially unmute the phones, so we can all hear each other and begin the speaker registration process. Phones are now muted, and I will ask that any member of the public speak, uh, a general public comment. The last name starting with A, please, uh, give me your first and last name and home address. A. E. C. D. E. F. G. H. I. J. K.
Charlie Cradaville.
Noted. L. M. N. O. P. Q. R. S.
Linda Stork.
Noted. T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. Right now, we have Charlie Cradaville and Linda Stork. Is there anyone, uh, that we missed that would like to be put on this initial, on this list of speakers? Anyone at all? Seeing none, the public comment list is now closed. Madam Chair, the first speaker is, uh, Charlie Cradaville.
Mr. Cradaville? Spell your last name.
My last, yeah, my last name is still spelled K-R-A-D-O-V-I.
Thank you.
Mr. Cradaville, you can proceed.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll say first of all, thanks to everyone who asked some of those tough questions tonight that needed to be asked. It is sad, though, to see how far this board has fallen. You know, not only are you abusing your powers to suppress the public's ability to comment and ask questions, uh, such a far cry from, uh, the, uh, level of input you allowed, uh, less than a year ago. And, uh, you know, not only that, but no one from the Board of Ed even came out to speak about a new school. Um, you know, no board members, no facilities committee, no, uh, superintendent. I know I've been to this board where you've had Superintendent Kaplan show up and talk about building a school. Um, but here, the Board of Ed would rather hide from the public and, uh, you know, let the discussions happen in this, in this space without even their presence. Uh, also, no one from DevCo to testify for the project that they are supposedly going to build. Um, you know, just a year or two ago, you had Mr. Palladino testifying about one of his projects he was pushing, but for some reason, this one and the cancer due project, no co-testimony, no witnesses from DevCo. It can, you tell me, uh, I don't know all of your backgrounds, but are any of you current or former K through 12 public school teachers on this board? Hearing nobody speaking up, maybe, maybe that's the cases that nobody on the board is a current or former teacher. And to that end, uh, I think it's kind of sad and stupid that, you know, the only person who had any experience being, uh, a public school K through 12 teacher that spoke tonight was time limited to five minutes, and the witnesses took up most of her time. Um, so that was after a two-hour presentation for the applicants, where you deferred to them and went back and forth with them a lot. Um, but then the public, a person who actually knows education, worked for, you know, decades in the New Brunswick public school systems, none of y'all have that experience, none of the witnesses had the experience. Board of Ed didn't send anybody, DevCo didn't, didn't speak up, and, uh, you know, we're supposed to, uh, think that everything's going to be okay, this is a fair process, things will get done on time, and, and, uh, you know, we'll be vigilant about the contamination. We don't believe it because you're not respecting us. And, uh, you know, I want the record to reflect that I was one of the first people to propose building a school at this site, and if you don't believe me, you can check the minutes of the December 2018 New Brunswick Housing Authority meeting. But I, I want to be crystal clear, my, my suggestion was to build an additional school because we need a school for that area. Not to take away or give away one of our newest, best schools, uh, as part of some, uh, corrupt corporate deal. Um, but, uh, unfortunately, it's par for the course here. Mayor Lynch's administration sold off the Washington School just a few blocks away from the site, sold it to the hospitals, did not replace it. Jim Cahill's administration sold off the Bayard Street School to a private developer for a price much less than it was worth and did not replace it. The Sixth Ward was home to a Votech School. Uh, that board, uh, sold it to a developer who has just let it fall, uh, fall apart and has not done anything with it. Um, and, you know, the Fifth and Sixth Ward now are almost, they have almost no schools. The only public school left is the 110-year-old Lincoln Elementary School, uh, that, that is the one that actually needs to be replaced. Uh, and, uh, it's just crazy, there's no, uh, planning that's done in the city, it's all responding to what the corporate masters want. And, I'm sorry?
I was just letting you know that there was like one minute.
Okay, well, I, I think I've, I've made my point here that, uh, you know, we need to have more public input, not less. You didn't hear from any parents or students about this project. The Board of Ed didn't show up, they've been letting us down, and we need change in this city. We need to get rid of Mayor Cahill and his corrupt cabal. We need to clean up this site and build a school there. We need to make sure the kids have safe routes to, to get to that school, and we still need to save the Lincoln Annex, it's not taken away yet. They need to undo what they did and give it back and reopen it because the, that neighborhood needs a school too. If you can't just trade neighborhoods like bargaining chips, every neighborhood deserves a school, and Lincoln Annex should stay. Thank you.
Who's next on the list, Dan?
Uh, the, uh, the next and, uh, final speaker is, uh, is Linda Stork. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Hey, your name, uh, say your name, spell your last name for the record one more time.
S-T-O-R-K.
Ms. Stork?
Yes. Thank you. So, um, yeah, this is, uh, this is very true and, um, you know, very sad that this is what, what, I, you know, that it's, that it's supposed to be such a, uh, a wonderful thing. Actually, schools of this size, I mean, they can be beautiful, and they can have pretty playground and all these things that they have, but, um, here's what in Connecticut, where they actually do, uh, research, the legislature mandates research before they build the schools. And, uh, it showed overwhelmingly, they, they reviewed all the research, and the Office of Legislative Research says for urban schools serving high percentages of students in poverty, school size and student performance displayed a negative linear relationship with student performance best in schools under 200. Well, you know, obviously, we're not going to get to under 200, but to be doubling the size of the schools, I, and, and, um, it's still not clear where they plan to bring the kindergarten to third-grade schools from, uh, and maybe they are going to take them from Lincoln, but then there's still not going to be an, an, enough, it's, it's just, the one thing you can do to mitigate the effect of poverty in a school besides make people not be poor, how you can mitigate the academic effect in school is to make smaller schools. Here's from the, uh, Wisconsin Schools research. The relationship between size and performance is negative and large across the board. They've comprehended studies of, uh, every public school in seven states, seven different states. New Jersey wasn't one of them, but there were plenty of states like New Jersey. And, uh, you know, the, the same result, every time. It's the, it's, it's the, you know, most deciding factor, school size. Um, and here we are, just making it bigger and supposed to be better, but no, if it's going to negatively impact school achieve, uh, academic achievement, not to mention the disruption of taking kids out of their neighborhood for a few years and shipping them out to the, um, you know, out to the warehouse and then bringing them back, there's the disruption, and then there's the fact that they're going to this huge school, which has been proven. Why would we think this would be the exception? This will have a negative impact on academic achievement. And my, and my other, not to mention that, you know, a school that size, I mean, it's just, it's a logistical nightmare from the traffic to the, to the lunch periods, to the, uh, you know, to having things specific to, um, kindergarten and younger students, um, which they should have. Um, and my other question that I didn't get to ask before, what happens over 55 million? Because Red Shaw cost almost 55 million, and they didn't have the land. So, starting with the land already, what makes us think that a school that's, I think, 30% larger than Red Shaw is going to come in at just, and, and, oh, and we're talking about years later, not to mention with inflation and everything, 10 years later, that it's only going to cost a couple of million more? How is that even possible? And then, so, but you said, you know, people determined it, okay. But then, but just say it doesn't come in under 55, where does the money come from? Can we guarantee the taxpayers aren't going to be on the hook because the whole cell all along has been the taxpayers, this isn't costing the taxpayers anything? Well, so far, it costs us on the county level 25 million into the Cancer Pavilion. And, you know, so we also, we're also residents of the county, so that was already a lie, and now how is the school not going to cost us money? I mean, the, the school district will have to finish the school if 55 million doesn't do the job, but where does that, where, where, what's the plan? Is there anything written into the agreement that if 55 million is spent and the school isn't done, that somebody steps up and gives more money? I don't know, should I take that for a no? I don't know.
That, that's time, Ms. Stork.
Thank you, Dan. The public comment portion of the meeting is closed, and we have no other, uh, matters to discuss as a board, so can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Chris Stiltelem, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll oppose.